... your voice for all to hear, and please abstain from side conversations as they may interfere with the reporting. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's very, very helpful. So let me give a quick overview of the meeting's objectives and ground rules. Megan's going to give you an overview of the community survey that was just conducted and you got the results of in writing a few days ago. And then Emily is going to go over some concepts of strategic plan implementation. That's a little late, earlier in the agenda than it was in the packet that went out. We thought it would be helpful to have that in your mind before we get into the details of the strategic plan. And then I want to go through a summary of the discussions that Mayor Polly and I had with each of you individually in the last week or so. Give you a summary of where we are there and an overview of what I think your decision points are tonight based on those conversations where I think you have some decisions to make. And then we'll take a break, give you a chance to ponder that, and then come back together and walk back through those decision points one by one. And see if we can get to consensus. Our desired outcome today is for you to make the decisions that need to be made on policy direction for the strategic plan. To give the staff and the consultants guidance on any final editing that you want in the final strategic plan document. And prepare for final plan approval. After today's meeting, we will do the editing you gave us direction to do tonight. A final draft of the plan will go out in your packet late this week for the council meeting that is on April 26th, a week from today. And you'll have that time, you'll have one last chance to comment. And then it's on your agenda for approval, first meeting in May. So that's the process from here. So ideally, in the next couple hours, we'll be able to come to basic agreement on where we are on the plan. And from there on, we're just making sure we got the final tweaks right. Does that all make sense about what we're trying to do tonight? So just quick recap, I'm going to go fast, but just kind of put all this into context. We decided to take on the strategic planning effort a little over a year ago. We had some shared goals for the strategic plan. We wanted vision and strategy alignment so that council and staff had a more disciplined approach to decision-making and coordination among departments. That'll be a key topic of Emily's presentation in a few moments. We wanted to engage diverse community voices and understand community-driven priorities. We've done that in a number of ways. I'll touch on it in a moment. And we wanted an actionable plan that gave some direction to priorities. It was realistic about capacity. We knew how to assign things. It'll be driving the budget and capital improvement decisions. You wanted metrics and monitoring, and you wanted a good communication tool. So I hope what we're going through tonight is living up to those expectations that we set out at the beginning of the process. The community engagement at various levels has been considerable through this process. There was a community-wide survey last spring with more than 1,000 responses. There were over a dozen focus groups and community pop-ups in the community where people gave us input into city priorities last spring. We had a stakeholder charrette with more than 50 people getting together at the senior center to discuss issues and help sort of frame the first concept for this plan. Then the staff had quite a number of work sessions to craft specific language for your consideration. We had quite a few council work sessions on this. We did some ad hoc work groups in this room a couple of months ago where we worked up the first full draft. And then we've had some individual conversations with Mayor Polly and I and each of you individually to help frame up the conversation tonight. And then we just had another community survey, which we know that at least 150 different individuals responded to it, maybe quite a few more. We had more than 500 comments on various parts of the survey. And then we also had an informal written council survey. So you're kind of getting all that input. That's all the things that have teed up. Put you in a pretty strong position to make an informed set of decisions today. So just quick reminder, we approved ages ago, it seems like, vision, mission, and guiding principles. We agreed that updated vision for the city is that Issaquah thrives as a welcoming community, creating a sustainable legacy for future generations that honors its rich history and passion for the natural environment. On updated mission, you agreed that the city, the mission is to foster a safe, vibrant, livable, and inclusive community through effective stewardship and quality public services. And you also agreed on a set of guiding principles relating to people, the environment, community prosperity, service excellence, and equity. And then we identified a number of strategic plan priority areas to establish goals for the plan. And those as outlined in the draft document that's been circulating out in the community for the last month or so. The priority areas and goals had your approval already, including mobility, growth, and development, environmental stewardship, social and economic vitality, city leadership and services, and infrastructure as those key issues. Strategic priority areas. Each one of those has a goal associated with it. Mobility is getting around town. It's easier for people to live, work, and play here. Core infrastructure is an infrastructure system that is planned, designed, built, and maintained well, supports current and future community needs. Growth and development, its growth is proactively managed, planned, and communicated in a responsible way that retains our strong sense of community and livability. Social and economic vitality, an economically vital and diverse community is supported by robust businesses, affordable housing, and supportive services. Environmental stewardship, as environmental resources are proactively enhanced, protected, and stewarded. And city leadership and services, as leadership and accountability is provided in the delivery of public services for our growing and diversifying community. Then each of those goals and objectives had a number of goals, had a number of objectives. And the ad hoc work groups that we had a few weeks ago really framed out what those objectives were. And that's all been fleshed out in the current draft plan that's been out in the community. I won't read all of those right now. So that's the plan that's been out in draft in the community. That went out about a month ago, and then a community survey went out to get feedback on that, and Megan's going to give you an overview of that.
I'm going to talk about the survey, both the input and also the promotion that we did for it in the community. So throughout the whole process, we've been working to background with everyone that's been in reach with the survey, with the strategic plan process thus far. So when we did the promotion for this, we made sure that we contacted everyone that had responded to previous surveys. We reached back out to the charrette participants. The people that participated in the focus groups and the meetings in a box. We also brought it up to the wider community through a variety of methods, including the Issaquah Insider newsletter, social media with Facebook and Twitter. And then also direct emails to several organizations in the community, including the school district, the Issaquah Highlands, Chamber of Homers, and a few others. We also did several presentations to boards and commissions throughout the month of March when the survey was open. And we received over 2,000 people who clicked on the survey, or sorry, who viewed the survey. 2,000 people directly from Facebook who we reached. And then we had 775 people actually click on the link for that. During the same time when the survey was open, we also had lots of people visit the strategic plan website, which had both the copy of the draft of the survey, the draft of the plan, and then the survey itself. We had 750 people who visited that. And as you're aware, the survey provided feedback on the objectives and potential actions. And we received a total of 535 comments on that over the course that it was open. And respondents were able to comment on either one or all of the different questions that we had. We also had a question on the overall plan at the end. So as you can see, mobility received the most amount of responses, and then there was a few with some of the other categories. For mobility, we had about 40% of the comments were concerning traffic. And these were people saying how long it takes to get around or having some frustrations with that. There was also 25% of comments that mentioned specific projects or improvements. So a lot of the things that were mentioned were, some of the roads we're familiar with, Issaquah Hobart Road, Newport Way, Front Street, Highlands Drive, State Route 900. Other people had comments on specific projects to work on, including mentioning building a bypass and adding more bike lanes and easier walkability. 25% of the comments were on light rail or linking new developments and mobility improvements. So 10% of these expressed support for wanting to include light rail in the plan and making sure we're integrating it into our plans now. There were some comments that people said they wanted a specific response on the water and air problem that I was mentioning. And about 10% of responses were linking traffic with new development. So this was, most of the comments were saying they wanted new development to pay for and plan to track improvements. 20% were mentioning alternative modes, and the most frequent thing cited here was about transit and wanting to increase access to it. Wanting to have some neighborhood shuttles to help with that. There's also several comments on wanting to improve walkability and again, the increased bike lanes as well as bike safety. We did receive some comments on the specific potential actions that are included in the plan. Those included support for actions related to pass-through traffic, funding for projects, focusing on near-term actions, and support for partnerships for transit and other mobility options. For growth and development, we had 78 comments here, and over a third were comments on controlling or managing growth. So many expressed a desire to control either the size or appearance of growth in the city with new development. Others were more concerned about managing the impact of development, whether that's traffic or affordability in the city. Also environmental concerns about wanting to protect green space. And others were expressing that they didn't want to see any additional growth in the city at all. 15% of comments were on the third objective and supported planning infrastructure in anticipation of future growth. And several of these comments mentioned the idea that growth should pay for growth. And we saw that in both the mobility sections and infrastructure sections as well. 15% of the comments highlighted the need for affordable housing in relation to increased growth and development in the city. We also have the objective on this in social and economic vitality. So it's possible there is more comments in this section because the way the survey was ordered, they may not have read that objective yet, but it also relates to growth and development. 10% of comments were focused on the first objective. Respondents generally supporting the objective to protect neighborhood charm and character. And some were citing specific areas that they wanted to see improvements on. The comments for the fourth objective about having a variety of amenities in the city were focused primarily on suggestions for what types of amenities people wanted to see, including grocery stores, parks, and schools. And there are comments about specifically planning for increased school capacity. So many of these comments were overall supportive of the objectives that we have here, but having various suggestions about special projects or other pieces for implementation. For environmental stewardship, throughout each of the areas, there are several comments that either said, "Looks good," or "I agree," or "Sounds great." So those I kind of classify into a "looks good" category. And environmental stewardship had 25% of the comments total were under that category. So these are not comments that had any other piece of information in them. So if they were supporting an action or if they had a critique, then it would go under a different category. So these are just the "looks good" ones. 20% of comments were on the second and third objectives. The second one on community stewardship, respondents supported working with partners on environmental stewardship activities and also wanted to see increased volunteer opportunities in the city. The third objective on strategic acquisition, respondents agreed that we should be working on land acquisition now, as land may not be there tomorrow, so we've got some priorities. Comments were on protecting our natural surroundings as it related to increased growth and development. And there are several comments that people want us to have us do more in this area. There are a few comments that kind of fell into other categories. We received a couple on, including further work to consider climate and reduce the city's carbon footprint, increasing recreational opportunities. As well as highlighting the importance of parks. Social and economic vitality, over a third of the comments were on affordable housing. And these included suggestions about ways that we could get this in the city. And then also people were expressing support for having a cross-income spectrum, focusing both on lower-income people and also wanting to make sure the people who work in the community can live in the community, such as teachers and public servants. 25% of the comments were on attracting and supporting new existing businesses. And several of these had suggestions about the types of businesses people wanted to see in the city and wanted to see more small and local businesses. 10% of the comments focused on having a living wage or higher wage business. 10% of respondents provided comments strongly supporting the city investment of time and resources into social services. And then also having the city partner with nonprofits on that work. So about 25% of the comments for city leadership and services were about the first objective, with many supporting the city's focus on public engagement. And again, similar to some of the other categories, a lot of the suggestions were about specific ways that the city could do this. So by encouraging things like newcomer welcome events, holding meetings for venues, and improving the website. Another 25% of comments focused on the city as a high-performing organization. And about half of these were looking at the more kind of internal factors of that. And then the other half were talking more about efficiency in government. And then 20% of the comments fell into that same "looks good" category that I talked about during environmental stewardship. So infrastructure only has the one objective, and 40% directly related to it and wanting to support the city's work doing operations and maintenance. Most of the comments were, it supported that, and there are people who expressed that they wanted the city to be doing that already. 15% of the comments were around growth and development, and particularly the infrastructure's planned in anticipation of future growth, and the growth pays for growth, so some of the similar comments. And then the other 15% related to mobility. Those were around construction and again, some of those improvements. The overall plan, so about 50% of the, so the question here was asking what should be considered as the plan takes shape. So 50% of the comments were really similar to ones we'd seen in some of the other strategic priority areas. And 15% were on implementing the plan, ensuring funding, staff, resources, and accountability for it. So making sure that, you know, we say you're going to do these things and go out and do it. 10% of the comments fell into that same "looks good" category, except for here, I also added the comments that were just saying thank you for the, either for the opportunity comment, or thank you for doing the plan. So again, those ones didn't have any other comments. This category also had a wider range of comments falling into another category. And some of them were talking about wanting to see a public dashboard on the plan, wanting to make sure underrepresented groups are in the plan, and also wanting to talk about the parts of the strategic plan. There's also several comments that talked about the city's vision and wanting to see more of a vision behind this document. And I think it's possible that in the survey itself, we just listed the goal, objectives, and actions, so we didn't have the vision, mission, guiding principles. So overall, so we've gone out to the public several times and wanted to make sure again that we've been looping back with everyone at the various checkpoints along the way. So we've incorporated a lot of that feedback into the plan. So from this survey, we saw that there's overall support for the overall policy direction of the strategic plan. So there, a lot of the comments were really supporting objectives. And then a lot of the suggestions were really more at the implementation level, wanting the city to focus on special projects or wanting to see locations for certain mobility improvements. So some more specifics along those lines. So that's the, some of the valuable input that we received. So we'll want to make sure that as we move forward with the implementation of the plan and start to look at the actions, we'll be looking back at these comments to make sure we incorporate that feedback that we heard in the implementation side. And then also, there was a lot of crossover in comments between with growth and development, mobility, and stewardship. Those showed up in several of the different categories. There was a lot of focus in these areas.
So I realize in the introduction of the meeting, I didn't say what I was supposed to say about sort of the meeting format. So we're hoping that in this room, we can be a little less formal than in council chambers and just kind of have a discussion primarily amongst the council tonight. Because you're trying to position yourself for being ready to approve this plan. But I hope you'll welcome the administration sort of giving, directly responding to questions or giving you their spin on things. And I'll try to be here to keep the conversation on track and move things, but I try not to talk too much. I would welcome you now to either ask questions of Megan, who did all that analysis, which we're all grateful for. But I know you also got the raw data, and this would be a great time for you all to say, what did you see in the results of the survey and how's that useful to you in the strategic plan?
I like that idea. That's great.
Councilmember Winters.
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide on social and economic vitality? And I'm going to, I think it's four back. Thank you. And I'm just going to pick on the last bullet just as an example. And it's a question of you and those of you that thought about the kind of summarizing this data. One way I could look at that last bullet and say, well, if only 10% thought that that was important, that's a pretty low number. 10%, maybe only 1 out of 10. That's one way to look at that. But I, but what I'm, my question then is, and I'll just use this one as an example, there are others. If you put together and summarize this information this way, what is your hope? What is that telling you? What do you think that that should be telling or conveying? What are you trying to convey to us with a summary statement like that?
So I think with each of, there's only seven questions on the survey, so most people's responses, I would say, commented on, you know, one specific aspect of it. So there was a question on one to four objectives with a number of actions or potential actions below that. So I think some people just picked out, you know, one thing that they wanted to comment on. So going across the comments altogether, you're looking for patterns that they saw. I would say that this one has, you know, 10% of the comments in this category. With going through all the comments and the data, it also, I would say, showed up in some other categories. There was talk in several of the other areas about wanting to make sure underrepresented groups are receiving a voice at the table or looking to have maybe mobility improvements for people with limited mobility options. So I did see it kind of in different areas, but specifically under this, it was showed up in 10% of the comments.
These are open-ended questions, so they didn't pick off of a multiple choice list. They had to bring it up. So one in 10 doing that shows a certain amount of, you know, that's a way higher response than if there was a list and only 10% picked that choice. Does that make sense?
I guess it didn't fall into the other category, which only had, you know, one or two responses to both things.
Okay, so when you've summarized it this way and in your narrative, you're pulling out what you think are relatively high responses or a type of response in a given category, even if it only is 10% of the overall comments, you're still, you're trying to convey that this is high.
Yeah, so this topic showed up more than something that only showed up once or twice. So going across all of them, these were the top categories. Nothing, no other category popped up with more than 10%.
So while I said I like this for questions, it still is kind of formal, so maybe if you all agree.
That's the way we roll.
I know, I know. Maybe if you all agree, we will just do this for question and answer, and then we'll put the cards down when you're having your discussion about it. So I think it was Hunt and then Ray.
Is there a chair? This is a bad place.
Could you please go to the one that's about the city leadership?
Sorry, it's workshop.
So I think that while it seems like there were a number of positive comments sort of similar to in the other groups. There were also, in my reading of the comments, there were also in this particular group, a number of negative comments about the wording of the objectives and that they were too. So one of them was the language of this section is too city culture-oriented, for example. Too city culture-oriented. So, and then they call out the employee experience plan. What is it? Why does it matter? Also, the equity and cultural competency initiative. What is it? Why does it matter? So I don't, I think that it does seem like people were generally positive about this area. But I also saw in a number of comments that there was specific questions about what are these things? And there's not a link, and people, you know, it should be, I think, clear from the plan what we're talking about. And I think in the actual plan, it also refers to the five, let's see what it's called. The five design principles. So it's very jargony. And I would really like to see that section made more clear to a general audience, that you wouldn't have to go look up, what are five design principles? What is the employee experience plan, and what does it matter?
That's good. Vicki, I'm kind of trying to keep notes on what I would call the publishing comments. And so that's really helpful information to know what we would do when we actually go to publish. So having links, reports, explaining words, that's, or terms, that's great.
Councilmember Ray. So I don't want to be a Debbie Downer here, but you have a sample size, for instance, in social and economic vitality of 65. So 10% is seven people, so it doesn't mean anything. It's too small of a sample size. So I find that expressing these things in terms of percentages implies a level of precision that doesn't exist. We have too small of a sample size to draw that conclusion. I think the value in this is more about what Councilmember Hunt was just talking about, which is what are the impressions that we're taking away from it? It's not about, is 25% of this or 10% of that, because we don't, I mean, we have 65 comments, and so it doesn't mean anything. So what I think is where the value in these comments is into reading them more holistically than trying to somehow quantify them. Because we're just misleading ourselves by doing that.
And I would highly encourage you all to interpret it and share your interpretations with each other right now, just because I think, I think you're absolutely right, and this is a great time to discuss it.
Because it wasn't really a question. It was more of a comment.
Councilmember Marts.
Are we only doing questions?
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you.
Well, then I'm going to plus one what Chris just said. I don't want to confuse qualitative with quantitative. I think it's qualitatively very useful. I don't want to pick against over the quantitative. I just want, I have a question, just, this is a housekeeping nit question. The packet that we have for this evening is formatting incorrectly, and so the information that's in there, as these are comments, there's tons and tons of comments that are chopped off. And those of us who have the Excel spreadsheet that it was based on, we have access to that, but the public doesn't have it. So in some way, shape, or form, we want to make sure we get the full comments back to the public.
Yeah, you're right.
Good observation. Councilmember.
So trying to stick to things that are useful. It really seemed like there were a lot of comments in the mobility section talking about, there's too much measurement going on. That doesn't seem like there, that's really an action, you know, shouldn't we already? already have this data? Do we need to measure it again in order to know how to take action on that? And so I think it would be a good dime, good idea to maybe look at the performance metrics and see if there might be some tweaking there based on these responses.
Okay, other thoughts or comments on the survey before we move forward into the strategic plan implementation? Okay, Councilmember Goodman, and then Councilmember Hunt, reading body language.
So talking about the numbers of folks who commented, I'm one, so the numbers seem to show that, that there was a support, sorry, how do I say this? That there seemed to be much more interest into the mobility and the growth and development, like way ahead of the others. And wondering if the same concerns about statistical, yeah, significant, sorry. If you all feel the same about that, because to me, it suggests that maybe there's a prioritization we ought to look at, in terms of what's important. Not that all these things aren't over time important, but it seems to me that what we've laid out to the public is a strategic plan, that, and we've talked about this a little bit, where we have all these different topics, and we have them all even plain, and it seems like the responses are suggesting that two of them are more important than the others in terms of urgency.
Mayor, can I just clarify to question order on the survey, because while that may very well be true, I think it's important to also understand there's a definite pattern of survey fatigue that you see in the numbers, and so the question order, I think, has a role to play in that.
Well, I don't know what order they were, were they in that order?
They were in this order here, so.
Well, mobility, then, there had to have been a lot of fatigue between one and two.
I think that there was.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there is a pattern there, so I don't, I don't decide that.
So at what point do we just, like, it doesn't matter? I mean, why do we do this if it just, I mean, so was mobility the first questioning?
Yep.
And so was there's like a dramatic fatigue between, you think, between one and two?
I think that that's quite possible, there, and we had a good amount of information to read for each of the pieces. So it looks like there was there, but then I would say there's not as much of a difference between the other pieces. It does drop off for each question, but the rest of the responses are a little more similar.
And I would say you're all free to draw your own conclusions, you know, you saw the raw data, this is the order the questions were presented in, so that's the information that we have. Councilmember Hunt.
I had one quick formatting thing. So also, in addition to the being cut off, I think even in the Excel sheet, there are a number of places where, for some reason, it translated into symbols, so if we could just get that cleared up, so it's more logical. And then also, I don't, I, I think there is probably some importance that people are motivated to answer the mobility question, I mean, just based on everything else we hear.
Absolutely.
I don't know, I think it's that, it's there's that energized feeling around that issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would draw the same conclusion. Councilmember Marts.
So, you know, my concerns about statistically significant versus not statistically significant continues to be a thing, and I think on future issues before this council, later this year, next year, the year after that, we should decide, you know, at some point, I asked whether we could get, do a statistically significant survey here, and was told we didn't want to do that, so, okay, so we've got what we've got in front of us. I mean, I just, you know, everybody, you know, it's like seven blind men on the elephant, right? We're all feeling different parts of the elephant. I look at this and I say, it doesn't surprise me that mobility is in sort of a different class than everything else. I don't know if I would pick out growth and development as particularly different than the others, I just, I see this as reinforcing what I think all seven of us probably thought going, yeah, which is that mobility is a huge passion amongst anyone who walks bicycles or drives in the city of Issaquah. So that certainly shows that to me, beyond that, I'm not ready to say what it says.
Fair enough. Councilmember Winterstein, and then Councilmember Batiste.
Thank you. I'm looking at the survey maybe differently than I'm hearing the rest of you are. It's not about statistics to me, it's not about samples, it's, you know, I'm not looking at sample size and deciding that seven out of six, five is not meaningful. There's been a lot of work that has gone into the formation, that people have a chance to take a look at, and we've got a lot of, a significant, I think, number of comments. I was looking for some type of trend that said, man, you really missed something. Like, if 50% of them came back and said, boy, you missed global warming, that's like the number one thing, I'm just using that as an example, you know, then I think I'd have something I would want to strongly react to. On the other hand, you know, a lot of comments were, as was summarized, were very specific, a lot of them were very general, but in my one-pass review of this, I didn't really see anything that jumped out to me that said, you know, we really missed the priority, we really missed an action, we really missed some type of objective. That's what I was looking for. I think you can, you can read this any way you want, you can say, I found a bunch of stuff here to support the things I think are most important, or I found a bunch of comments in here that I think support my negative perspective on something. I mean, the full spectrum is in here. But just for, and I don't, I'm not, I don't think it's a good use of my time, and I'll let you guys decide what you want to do, but to try to engineer a result out of the survey and what we are right now, like, looking at statistics and how they're going to weigh and potentially affect whether decisions we're going to make today, I just don't, that's not the way I want to make this decision. I don't, I don't, I'm not looking at it that way. So, so, I mean, this is an interesting conversation, but I don't, I don't know how we're going to use that, because we have objectives for what we want to achieve today, and, and, you know, I, it's interesting to know about what we think about the statistic significance in something, but there's, you know, we have a body of work here, there's comments all over the place, and if there's something here that really suggests we should do something different or add, then please pull that out, but I haven't seen that, so that's the way I'm taking this information.
Councilmember Batiste, and then I think we should keep going.
So I, I think that I come at this with a little bit of a different lens, although similar to what Councilmember Winterstein just talked about. What I, what I wanted to understand, well, first of all, let me back up, just, just in my experience outside of strategic planning for the city, but doing, going through a lot of strategic planning processes in my, in my past, really understanding that when we're, we put such a large amount of work into this, as we have, and that that is something that is, really becomes our first version of what we're going to go forward with, and I think that Councilmember Ray asked a critical question early on, that talked about, how are we going to use this plan? And I know that we're going to have more touchpoints on this, and what I wanted to understand from this last round of community engagement was, was are we missing something? Was there something glaring that was going to stand out, where, where the community was coming back and talking about certain sections, or certain comments, or certain goals, or objectives, that they really didn't agree with? And what, in my read, it really seemed like we were on track, and I do know that we will have opportunities to go forward and to adjust and change, and, but I wanted to make sure that with our goals, that we, that we were on track. And I was really looking at the comments coming back as qualitative. I wanted to read, and I wanted to learn, which I did, and, but I didn't see anything glaring. And obviously, mobility really, really called out, so we sort of have that at the top of our list, which I think is where it belongs, if we talk about the order of how we would list our goals. But I, I really didn't see anything glaring that, that was giving me pause in that area. And I take a lot of comfort in having done this before, and knowing that we'll have chances to follow up, and be able to, and be able to, as we're going through budgeting, and be able to take another look at the information. So I, I felt comfortable with the information that came back, and I, and I'm thankful that we did the survey, it was great to read all of the comments and learn.
Great. So, like I said, I'd suggest we keep moving, because I know you want to spend your time focusing on the plan, so, thank you, Megan. I would observe that in the, in the meetings that Mayor Polly and I had with you individually, we spent by far the preponder, I'd say, I would say, in general, folks are pretty okay with the structure of the plan, with a variety of specific comments, I'll get into it in a while, but by far, we spent the most time on, how's this going to relate to implementation? How does it relate to ongoing and future budgeting process? And so we thought it would make sense to have Emily address that right up front before we get into the details of the plan, so that's where we're going to go next.
Sure. Great, thanks. So we, we put together two memos to try to articulate this a little bit more, building on prior conversations. We also put together a timeline. I'm going to talk first about the memo that's called Applying the Strategic Plan. So as, as we have discussed, we are contemplating the work that we do sort of in the future, and the conversations that we will have around budget priorities, et cetera, being in kind of three buckets. And we've called those, those things that are related to the strategic plan, those, so strategic priorities, those things that we might deem core or critical services, and then the last bucket, we've been calling timely opportunities. And we have definitions for each of those, I won't go through that now. The work that we have been doing here with the strategic plan is trying to identify what's our focus for the next five years. We have given some thought to how we might go about trying to achieve the outcomes that we want in each of those arenas, and therefore, we've had some conversations along the lines of prioritizing work that will be undertaken under the strategic plan. You will have a future conversation each year in the springtime to reexamine what you want the strategic work plan to be for the upcoming year. And so that conversation would happen, May-June timeline, it would be an initial conversation to kind of sort through your, your ideas about priorities for the strategic work plan. Staff would take that information, mayor would take that information, and we would use it as we begin our work on developing the preliminarily proposed budget from the mayor. We then come back to you in August timeframe, and we share our latest financial information with you as another piece of context about what we may be able to incorporate into the budget, and then the budget comes to you in September, and you see how we were able to match up the needs on the core and critical services, the needs on the strategic plan implementation, and the available revenues, and how well they meet those expenditure needs. And then during budget deliberations, you have yet again, another opportunity to say, hey, mayor's office, we don't like the choice that you made in, in this preliminarily proposed budget, we'd like to switch this thing for that, scale this up, scale this down, we need more conversation about how you have proposed this enhancement on a core services item, and we would have that sort of deliberation, conversation during budget development. We have not done a top-to-bottom examination of all city services, we haven't had a conversation on every service that we provide, about the level of service, goals that we have, what's the right return on investment, haven't done any of that work. That's, we all envisioned that that is something that we will be spending more time on in the future, we're not quite ready to do that. We, as you know, have a lot of objectives in our finance department to take care of first, that will help us to be in a position to support that conversation with council and the community in the future. And we sort of talk about that as priority-based budgeting. I think that is work that needs to be done, but again, we need to be poison-ready to take that on. So I laid out in the other memo, the budget priorities memo, kind of what we envision needing to do over the next three to four years, and getting us in a position where we can have that conversation on priority-based budgeting. On this memo about applying the strategic plan, so that was more about how we might have conversations around budget priorities during budget development timeline. There are other moments in time throughout the year where you are contemplating choices, where an ask comes to you, or an opportunity is placed before you, and you have to decide, you know, do we, do we go forward with this, what's the implication of that, how might it affect other priorities, et cetera? And so we believe that there's a way to go about kind of sorting through those thoughts, the pluses and the minuses, and we believe that's the same framework that you could apply during budget deliberations, and you could also apply as new agenda bills come through, or ID memos. And that's what's sort of outlined here. We tried to develop a little flow chart that would help to serve as a guide for the questions that we, as staff, would first be posing, and try to articulate in those agenda bills or memos, and use to help facilitate the deliberations of council, and that we would also hope that you would have in mind as you contemplate these choices. So, you know, first, first question that we would want to call attention to is, if we have said, we want to focus on things that are related to the strategic plan, we want to make sure we're taking care of core and critical services, and we want to be, we want to be thoughtful about how we approach timely opportunities, perhaps the first question we should ask as these items come through is, is this related to the plan? Is this a specific action called out in the plan? I try to, at the first fork, say, you may also see some opportunity there, right? In this moment, we may not see the best action item, or the best timely opportunity, and you want to be flexible enough to take advantage of that when it appears, but you should pose that question. Is it aligned to the strategic plan? If so, how? And then, and then your conversation should be about trade-offs, you know, how might we, how might we go about implementing this? Is this a strategic, is this a decision that needs a little bit more contemplation in the budget arena? Is it about service delivery, trade-offs, and considerations? So after you have decided it's alignment to the strategic plan, if you decide, eh, it's not really something we had contemplated in the strategic plan, and we're not sure that it should be something that gets connected back to the strategic plan, then you might ask, is it a timely opportunity instead? And we have a series of questions that you would pose there. And again, that's about trying to take advantage of the things that are going to be beneficial, but not detract from your ability to take care of a strategic plan, focus areas for the critical and core services. So we laid that out both on a flow chart, and then I kind of summarized it in three questions that are bulleted on page four of that memo. And then lastly, on that memo, we, we just tried to take a few, we had heard from a few of you that it might be interesting to look at decisions that might come before council, either during budget deliberations or separate from budget deliberations, and how might we process those questions in the future after adoption of the strategic plan? So we gave you some examples, these are examples that have been spoken about in the past, might be likely to come up in the future, and then lastly, I put a couple, I put one in the end there that relates to an item that you just discussed recently with resolution on discrimination, and said, you know, you're going to have a moment coming up in the future where we come back to you, and we report how we might go about additional work, and you're going to have to decide, should you authorize that, us to undertake that work? And you're going to have to decide, should you authorize that, us to undertake that work? And you may want to have that conversation in terms of what are the implications of that, you know, to our ability to carry out the strategic work plan or core services. Lastly, the last example I wanted to use is, we know you have already adopted other plans and that you are committed to those. And we haven't talked a lot about that. You know, how do those work plan items fit in with the strategic plan or fit in with core services or fit in with timely opportunities? We haven't talked about that. But I think you can use the same sort of structure and pose these same questions and deliberate in the same way around those. I'm not going to presuppose that decisions that council made two, three years ago are the ones, the same ones that you would want to follow through with now. But I think it's important for those to still be treated in a slightly different way. So we give you that. We gave you--
My dequestions before--
Sure. And attached that was this timeline. So on that memo about applying the strategic plan and about the timeline, be happy to answer any questions. So you have--
So, I think that was a very useful document. I'm not sure I agree with the conclusions of whether or not an item has a relationship to the plan. And I think, to me, having come into this process halfway through, it does highlight how important those actions are that I don't think the council has a sense that they got a really good touch point on. Because some of these areas, such as the evaluating the city's success in reducing intolerance and heat, I might tie into our objective that's in the city leadership area, whereas there isn't a specific action. And so, I think one of the trouble points we might have there is that because we were trying to keep our actions very tight, not all of them are going to apply specifically to time that we would want staff to potentially be dedicated. And I don't know how to resolve that.
Yeah, well, and I think part of what we were trying to express in the memo is one constant is going to be change, right? The issues that come up will change. But how do you think about those issues when they pop up and you want to respond in some way? How do you put that in context with the other things that you want to achieve? And what we're saying is, great, have that dialogue, have that dialogue. But here's some questions you might want to pose so that you can be thoughtful about implications. So I have no problem with you taking exceptions about where you might lead on that flow path. That's fine. But it's meant to be sort of an exercise. We will say, every time we bring an issue forward to you, we will have a little bit of our own dialogue on that A/B narrative to say, here's where we think it would be situated. You can take exception to that. You can deliberate with each other and decide, no, we think it's perfectly aligned. Or, hey, we've learned a lot over the last year and we think this is the next thing that we want to do. That's great, too. There's a built-in moment in time for those conversations. That's that May-June strategic plan workshop. That's the best opportunity to try to lay out the plan for the upcoming year. But you absolutely are going to have things that pop up in July, August, September, and so on. And so, you have to have a way of kind of going through that deliberation, posing these questions, and thinking about trade-offs.
And I think that trade-off is a little bit clearer to make when you're talking about an appropriation. It's a little bit more difficult when you're looking at staff time. And so, from my perspective, it would be very useful to be very clear at that point, as much as you can, about, this is the number of hours, here's what we won't be able to do because of that. And then that allows us, I think, to make those types of trade-off decisions.
Really good.
Councilmember Ray and then Councilmember Martin.
So I'm noodling a little bit on the concept of timely opportunities. And I'm kind of sticking in my crock just a little bit because if it's not, I mean, this is how we get nibbled to death by a thousand cuts, is, well, we did it because it was timely. But if it doesn't have anything to do with where we're going, it's probably not something we should do. And so, just putting it on the same level of decision-making as, here's our strategic initiatives and here's our things we've got to do, and then here's all this fun stuff that comes along that we're just going to go after because it's timely, I think it's a mistake. I think we should have, these are the things we've got to do because that's how we keep the lights on. These are the things we're going to do because that's what we said we do in our strategic plan. And if something pops out of the weeds and it doesn't fit in the strategic, we can't figure out how it supports our strategic direction, even if it looks like a great idea on paper, that's how we get sidetracked and distracted and we're doing a bunch of stuff and we don't have the resources then down the road because we committed these really five great timely opportunities and now we can't do the things that we think are really important. So that's just something to think about.
Yeah. And I would say, on the staff side, we don't feel differently about that. But we also don't want to keep things from you, right? We want to bring things forward and say, here's something that just happened, here's something for you to consider. But I think that the council conversation is along those lines. It's, great, thanks, let's have that conversation, let's try to situate it. You know, is this really important for us to do now? There will be timely opportunities that more like, hey, City of Issaquah, you have to do this.
Right.
Right?
Well, then that falls into the keeping the lights on bucket.
It might, or it might not. You know, I can make the argument for a few things that have come up like that that I would say don't necessarily seem like core services, but we've had little choice over.
I think if there's a mandate, but wherever that mandate comes from, then that mandates trump strategy. But strategy stumps strategy, boy. Strategy trumps opportunity every time.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
Councilmember Martin.
A couple things. First off, so appropriation to televise additional meetings not being related to, not on relationship to plan. We have working with the community, identify and remove barriers to accessing city programs and services. We have enhancing oral and written communication standards to increase clarity, access, and understanding of content for the public. Could you not, could not both of those be seen as related to that?
Maybe. You know, what I did is I looked at action items. We don't have an action item that says, you know, televise additional meetings. So that's why I put none on the plan side because, again, we could attach a lot of things to the plan. It is not called out specifically in the plan. Those actions that you listed or objectives that you listed are fairly broad. There could be more than one methodology to achieve those, but it's not specific to televising more meetings. So it was a fairly black-and-white assessment. Timely opportunity, that's the door, as Chris kind of talked about, that starts to get cracked open more frequently. But like I said, Tola, to Lindsay, we can define that differently. We can follow the flow path, you know, seven, eight, nine different ways. And that will be for all of you to deliberate. Staff will give an opinion and you can disagree with it.
Sure. So the second of my four questions is, your flow path for whether this is a timely opportunity? The answer to either yes or yes but is the same outcome. So how do they, what's different about a yes but than a yes?
Yeah, I think it's just that assessment of the cost of undertaking something.
So that leads to a different threshold, maybe? I mean, I'm looking for what--
Yeah, yeah, it may. So you can envision something that's timely opportunity and lower cost and supports, would be helpful to support the plan or critical services. And it seems like, as we defined, timely opportunities, you know, easy wins, low impact to being able to carry out strategic and critical services work plan. And a yes but might be, there's some alignment, it is a timely opportunity, but we think it's going to have some impact on our ability to carry out critical services or strategic work plan. And therefore, we need to have a more robust conversation with council to decide, are we ready to do that? Do we want that kind of trade-off?
Okay. Question three of four is, setting aside the flow chart for a second, how would the Bergsman conversation have been different with the strategic plan in place?
So for me, there is, and I don't have that exact one in front of me, but there is a pretty specific objective and action item around acquisitions of open space. And so, I think if that item were to come forward after adoption, that agenda bill probably would have said, this is in pretty good alignment with your strategic plan. However, this flow chart, again, is not binary. It doesn't say, okay, therefore, you absolutely have to do something or you absolutely don't do something. So we would still recommend that you have that conversation about, okay, so great, it's aligned, yay, check that box. But now, let's have a conversation about, you know, the budget, the timing, other implementation considerations before we proceed. So that's still the moment in time where all of you can say, yeah, I get it, it's aligned. But so would be maybe a parcel that costs us, you know, $400,000 instead. And perhaps we want to buy more and smaller parcels around the city. So you could still have a conversation about it, even if it's pretty well-aligned with the plan.
Okay. And then the last question that I have is around, as I've often said, I'm a worrier. So I'm trying to understand how this works if you don't have a council that is necessarily process-focused. Let me give you an example. You get four new council members this fall and they all want a hockey rink at the state park. And they campaign on a hockey rink in the state park and they all get elected. They're going to push for a hockey rink in the state park. And it does not matter what is in the strategic plan. It does not matter that it would be hard to define a hockey park, hockey rink in the park as a timely activity.
Sure. So my answer to that would be that, you said there were four. So under our council, yeah, under our council rules, there'd be no way for me to prevent, you know, that item from coming forward, nor should I. But I think as it's brought forward, again, we would have that discussion, that narrative in the agenda bill where we would point out, here's our opinion on how it's aligned or how it's not. And then the council--
In big letters.
Then the council would be able to debate that, take exception, agree with the city administration perspective on that and would--
Consider it.
You would consider it and you would take the vote. And if it ends up being four-three, then you're doing something that maybe three-plus city administration feels isn't aligned and may even detract from our ability to carry out those other pieces of the strategic plan. There's just no way to force a different outcome than that.
I think that's a key point there, is that this plan isn't going to force you to do exactly what it says the way it says it, but it's going to force you to admit you're not. And, you know, so, I mean, future councils are going to be able to do what they're going to do, but hopefully, the rest of you will hold them accountable to, you know, with said this in the strategic plan, if we're going that way, we are deliberately deviating.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Goodman.
Is it questions only?
No.
So talking about opportunities and talking about the plan provides a way for us to hold ourselves accountable. I don't agree with that. I think that the plan, I've said it before, so I'm going to say it again, I think the plan is so broad that whatever comes before us, we'll be able to somehow make some sort of an argument that is consistent with the strategic plan. And then the second comment I have, and I suppose it could be a question, is how in the world do we turn that or keep that once-a-year touch on what we want to focus the following year from becoming just our goal-setting session? Because I just am not convinced at all. I'm excited and interested to see what happens next year, to see how this really plays out because my guess is that it's just going to turn into kind of what we had before. And it's so broad that, you know, any one of us can make suggestions of and argue what we should be focusing on. So that's my concern.
So on that latter point of having those May-June sessions devolve into goal-setting, I think it would be our intention that as we come into that meeting, we bring you the strategic plan that you have adopted and we say, okay, at the moment of time when we adopted, we had identified these as potential actions. Here's a set that we think we should undertake in this next year. And then we would deliberate over that. That still provides an opportunity for council members to say, I don't like that action, I want to do a different action, or I want to do more actions, or I want to do fewer actions than what you've put in front of me. But hopefully, that provides a little bit of a framework and says, first, let's talk about this. Because we've had some dialogue around it and let's decide if that's the body of work that we want to do or if we want to change that in some way. It won't prevent a council member from articulating they want to do something else, but that is how we would start, is we would turn back to your adopted strategic plan and those potential action items and say, does this still look like the stuff we want to do in order to achieve this objective and this goal?
One more thing, more comment. Going back to the community comments that we've received during this whole process, hopefully, we turn back to those comments when we're looking at specific actions or ideas on what the community thinks we should do, particularly where we have vague notions now--
Yes.
--which is mentioned many times in the plan about, it's not clear, it's vague, we don't know what you're doing. There's one that says the plan is horrible. So it's not all rosy stuff.
Yeah, and I think Megan spoke to that. We actually did in the memo and in the presentation here advise that we think that's a beautiful opportunity for you is to take those community comments at that moment in time when you're shaping up the actual action plan for the next year and to say, what does it look like we want, what does it look like community is looking for? And that should inform that decision-making.
Councilmember Hunt.
So I also struggle with the timely opportunities part of this. And I think part of it is because in the proposed criteria for timely opportunities, it really seems to all be about things where urgency is present. And so, it's something that we need to do it now or we're not going to do it. But that by itself doesn't seem like a good reason to do something. So I would consider that we do have the strategic plan prioritization criteria, which we talked about previously, which starts with level of impact. So it seems to me like, and there is opportunity cost, but that's still, it sort of has the similar feel of like, if we don't do it now, then we'll lose it. But that's--
Yeah.
Yeah, but something like, we have to look at level of impact, the control of outcomes, likelihood of success, cost and time and money, and then the timing and opportunity. But that should still be last, even if we think it's a timely opportunity, I think.
I totally agree. Thank you for pointing that out. I kind of glossed over it. In the memo, we did mention that that criteria is still there, it would still be applied. We would attempt to speak to it as we bring forward those timely opportunities or agenda bills and we would comment on that. We would try to rate things, so to speak, on that criteria as well.
All right. Councilmember Martin, let's move forward.
Sure. I appreciate Councilmember Goodman's concern that we don't just asymptotically return to doing whatever we want and just citing the strategic plan as the reason to do what we want. It's going to be interesting to see how this works going forward. I think about, you know, would we have a skate park today if we applied these standards? Would Kohani still be an unincorporated part of our PAA if we had these standards going forward? So I think how, I mean, I use this horrible fictitious example of the skating, of the ice skating rink in the state park, but there will be things that will come up that will be substantial that we haven't thought of. And how we respond to that and how we continue to do the things that are identified in the plan while still considering those other options, I think are going to be a real challenge.
So, I think, great, I think, helpful-- helpful-- So, I think, great, I think, helpful conversation and feedback, some context of where we're going next, which is, I want to give you an overview of the discussions that Mayor Polly and I had going through this. And as we went through this, those of you who were later in the process heard us saying, "Well, we've heard 'doesn't so,'" so you've heard some preview of this. Those earlier didn't hear that so much because they hadn't heard anything. And we discussed it at the end, but I would say that the memo that went out in your packet is mine. Mayor Polly's kind of, we talked through the list, but I wrote it. And I would welcome your input, if you want, as I'm going through this. And what I'd like to do is give you an overview of sort of the high-level feedback that you gave us. And then, as I went through it, it seemed to me there were eight kind of decision items that loomed up that I thought you needed to make, give some direction on. Some are big items, some are smaller, but they were all at the objective level. And I'll walk through them and introduce them to you, and then, we can discuss them. And then, we'll take a break, and then, you come back, and we can walk back through them and decide, make decisions. It's sort of a kid agreement. And if there's a ninth or a tenth that I don't have on the list, as we're going through and agreeing on it, we should decide that there's something that I'm missing. But this is my best effort to say back to you what I thought were the sort of key decision points that came out of those conversations.
Sure. Nice approach, Joe. What are we going to do with those decision points? Are we going to do like we do a budget, which is a thumbs up, thumbs down? Or?
I think that was the hope, was that Brian would present it, he'd ask questions to make sure the understanding, everybody had a similar understanding. And if we have time before the break, even to have some just discussion about how you feel about all of them, and then, go through them like budget items. Just, where are you on it? And there's still time at that point, then, to still talk to each other about why you feel very strongly that this is a good idea or not a good idea.
And we're hoping that as you go through this, this is a discussion mostly amongst you because it's your plan. I'm just the guy writing down the things, so you don't need to convince me. You need to convince each other.
How voting?
You convince at least three.
I have no vote, and this is just my best attempt to try and feed back to you what I heard you say. And as I said, the mayor, and I discussed what the list was, but I wrote the wording. So, there was, when I started the meeting, or started the set of meetings, we had, I think we had seven areas of agreement that we kept trying out. And by the end, I thought we had five areas of agreement. So, we were there. So, the strategic plan will articulate expectations to the community about the council's intentions. And that's sort of a clear message of that's what the strategic plan is doing. We talked about whether or not that's a good thing. Most everybody said that is a good thing. There were some concerns, a couple of concerns expressed, that, you know, it's so broad that, and it tells that's what raises the expectations, it might actually not be a good thing that we're communicating. So, I'll just add that to that. That an annual cycle of budgeting and priority setting will provide a more disciplined and strategic approach to city actions. By far, we spent more time talking about that than anything else, and that's what we've just been talking about. So, I'll just leave that where it is. That the strategic plan to inform the 2020 budget that's coming up, as Emily just described, the strategic plan will be adopted in May. Today's April 16th, so it's kind of our timeframe. And the schedule that I laid out at the beginning of the meeting is consistent with that. The strategic document should include potential actions, even though these have not been fully vetted, approved, and budgeted. We spent some time discussing that individually. We discussed it at previous council meetings. We decided to include the actions in the draft that went out to the community, even though they hadn't all been, you hadn't wordsmithed each one of them, but it helped illustrate how the plan might direct the city. So, we decided to keep them in. And I would say, in general, you all have said you were supportive of that, although not all of you are in agreement with all the actions by any means, and I don't want to imply that.
Brian, can I ask a question? Because it was kind of nagging at me, and you just surfaced it for me. So, in the chart here, the examples of decisions, one of the things was, "Might loosely be associated with the plan, but not an active action item." And that kind of was irritating me a little bit because it implied that the action items in the plan have weight. And we discussed them being examples or samples or such-as's, but not vetted, approved, or budgeted. So, using them as a decision criteria really rubs me the wrong way. Just, you know, as illustrated, yeah, please.
Yeah, can I just clarify? So, what I would, again, anticipate because of how the timeline plays out is you will have an adopted strategic plan in May. You'll have at least a, let's say, year-one strategic work plan, right? By the end of June, adopted. And so, there's a couple of ways to look at it. You could say, "Is it a strategic plan action item that's in the work plan?" Right?
Okay.
So, that's one way, and so, that's direct connection. If it's just on the potential action list because it was part of the adopted plan, but wasn't anticipated to be part of council deliberation and discussion until year three, then you're probably still having the conversation. Yeah, it was listed there, but let's talk about if that's really what we want to do this year because we hadn't anticipated doing it until later, and we haven't really had that conversation about whether it's the thing that we want to spend money on and time on.
Okay. I'm with you. Thank you.
You had your hand up, too? I had the same concern, so fantastic.
And then, the council would like a unanimous strategic plan approval, but a 7-0 vote is not essential to the plan's success nor to the community's acceptance of the plan as clear council direction. We had some discussion of that, and I think that's kind of where, you didn't all talk about it together, but that was my sense of where we were by the end of that conversation, which evolved some from where it was at the beginning of the conversation. So, that was sort of areas that I felt like we were generally okay with. There were, I think there are eight outstanding issues that I want to first describe the issues and then try and refine them down into specific decision points. And all this is in the memo that was circulated in your packet, and they're in the same order as they were there. And these were sort of things that we spent time talking about, and I felt like you needed to give some direction or at least there needed to be some further discussion. One of them was the relationship between the strategic plan and the budgeting process. Like, as I said at the outset, we spent far more individually as a group, probably used up two-thirds of the time of all the minutes that were spoken. So, clearly, a key issue. And there it is. We've been talking about it for the last half an hour or two. Another issue that came up partway through the process, and it came up earlier in the process, like, a few months ago, there was an objective that was related to the city, the city's own operations and services goal that was about financial sustainability and fiscal prudence. And at that time, my recollection is, the council said, "You know, that's obvious, of course, we should do that. We don't really need to say that in the plan." As we went through these conversations in the last couple of weeks, it seemed like we were talking, mostly what we were talking about was the city's austere financial situation and how we were going to go through the budget process and that. And in reflecting on what the plan says, it doesn't actually acknowledge that. And the goal that says the city will have good services is sort of, it's kind of aspirational about what can happen, and it doesn't say, "By gosh, we're going to be really efficient with the public's money." And so, it seemed like maybe the city's challenging budget situation might be underrepresented in the plan as directed. And I just wanted to put that on the table for your discussion tonight. That kind of seemed to, by the end of those conversations, I was like, wow. That kind of seems, what we've been talking about isn't really clearly there. The third one, there's an objective that's about, that you had a robust discussion at a council meeting a couple of months ago about the desire for businesses in Issaquah to be home to jobs that would pay wages that would allow the people working in those local jobs to afford to live in Issaquah. And I think it was pretty clear in the council meeting that you, that what you meant, was you wanted, the jobs you wanted to get in Issaquah were the jobs that would pay enough money that you could live in Issaquah. And you had a debate about whether or not the term of art we should use was "living wage." And I think the consultants and staff messed up in writing up what you all talked about. And we just said, "Provide living wage jobs," which I think some of you really didn't think was the right wording. So, I'm flagging that, that, and we proposed in the memo, and I'll come back to it a little bit, proposed rewriting that so that we're not using that "living wage" word, which is kind of a term of art in some economic development circles that didn't seem like the right message to some of you. There was also a suggestion that, which also kind of harkened back to an earlier discussion, that maybe there's already also an objective under the same goal that is about new and existing businesses and business growth. And that maybe that and the jobs discussion should be together. And so, again, that's something I would tee up for you to discuss, both the wording of that and whether or not those two objectives should be one objective to achieve both purposes.
Sorry, Brian, can you say which specific objectives? Are you proposing?
Social and economic equality number one.
So, SE1.
And SE4.
And there's an increase in the number of existing businesses that choose to locate or expand in Issaquah.
I'll circle back and tee it up as a specific discussion point. But that, good question, that suggestion came out of the discussions. And then, this is not going to surprise anybody, and I bet we're going to talk about it some tonight, is what is the implication of including the actions, the potential actions as they are framed in, you know, in the draft plan that's been out to the community for several weeks? The actions that are in there are described as potential actions, and they had not been thoroughly vetted with all the councils. There'd been a variety of suggestions made, which staff and consultants had responded to, but you didn't walk through them one by one. They're not budgeted, they're not set as policy. And I would maintain that they are examples and not policy direction from council, and that they will, for them to become council direction and policy, they would happen in later decision, in budgeting, in priority setting on an annual basis. But there's implications of that, and you had some disagreement about that. So, and it seemed to me there were three points there, and some places where you're not all exactly on the same page. And so, I want to tee up a chance for you all to try and refine that. One is, is this, is this an ambitious vision that is tempered by budget realities? That is, where does Issaquah want to get, even though we know we don't, we're not just rolling in money and resources? Or is it a realistic and fundable action plan in that we shouldn't put anything in there that's an action unless we have the resources available to do it? And I think that's a, I think that's a fair question. And I don't think you're all on exactly the same page on that point. And so, enlist, there are some of you that think that you're not making a decision about the actions today, so it's fine that they're in there. There are some that think there's an implication. If you're going to put it in there, it implies you're going to be able to do it, and the public will be disappointed if you can't do everything in there. And some of you that think that some of the actions in there are not good ideas, period. So, that's one. Is it, is it an ambitious vision tempered by budget reality? Or is it a fundable action plan? And then, another question is, by listing potential actions, is it a promise to act on those actions? And it seems to me that you should be clear on what you mean by that, and we should make sure of that. And then, should the council as a group review and opine as a group and make decisions about the potential actions? And I think those are three different sort of sub-points to that. And I will tee those up as a discussion item and make a recommendation related to all three of those in a few minutes. Fifth one was the definition of charm and distinctive character, which is in one of the objectives. It says, "Protect neighborhood charm and distinctive character." And not for the first time, it was, "What does that mean?" And so, there's a question about that. Does that need to be spelled out more specifically? There was a suggestion that, did we want, there was one objective that refers to well-being. And the question was, "Do we mean to improve well-being or are we do mean to reduce equities in well-being?" And so, that was a nomenclature comment, and I'll try and think what I think was intended in a few minutes. And then, there was a discussion about, "Should the success measures be further refined before strategic plan adoption with baseline data and targets established?" And then, there was one about, one comment about schools that were part of the discussion early on in the strategic planning process and are not reflected in the current draft of the strategic planning document. So, it seemed to me that kind of all the issues that we talked about fell into one of those buckets. And the last, you were really pretty specific about some objectives. The top ones are sort of bigger, more conceptual things. Before we move into discussing those one by one, does that all sort of make sense? Hopefully, hopefully, you feel like I'm the same guy that you were talking to in recent weeks, and there just tracks a little bit with what we were talking about. Obviously, not all of you talked about all of these things, but... And Mayor, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that was good. I'm very interested to hear the, as you lay it out, to hear the questions and conversation around those. I think that's a good list.
So, then, pushing this into a specific set of decision points, and on page, what am I going to put on? Page five of my memo, which is page 67 of the packet. These are all teed up on one page with both the question and then, what would be my recommendation of sort of where you are. And I want to put those out there. And maybe I'll just do these one at a time and let you, we'll just talk about them a little bit, and then, set it aside, take a break, come back, and try and make some decisions about them. It seemed like an okay process. It's kind of all in here. So, the first one is, I discussed the relationship between the strategic planning and the budgeting process. And I think the question is, does the council need further clarification of Emily's description of the future budgeting and prioritization process? And my sense of what we need from you tonight is discussion will be helpful, but I don't think you need to take action. And we've already had some of that discussion, so I don't know if that needs further clarification. So, councilmember Hunt.
Got a question about how much of the flowchart is going to be with the plan versus separate supplemental information separate from the plan?
I think we envisioned it would be separate. You have the prioritization criteria that you had just mentioned. That's in the plan. There's some discussion about those three buckets. But the rest of the content from the memo, we hadn't anticipated incorporating it into the plan, but I'm looking for suggestions on that.
Any other thoughts on this topic and about whether or not you need more specific action in the plan or further discussion of it?
There was so many questions about how it would be used. So, this would be a good time to either say, "It's a lot clearer to me now," or "I'm still not exactly sure what this is going to look like," and ask some more questions. How's everybody feeling?
Can I just kind of play a scenario as a way to stimulate a discussion? So, it's, we're going to have a budget meeting in, let's say, June, and we're going to review something. Where's that something, so it's going to be a discussion, but it's also going to be some questions. Where's that something come from? So, I've got the plan, I'm pretty excited, it's adopted. I've got all my neat stuff, I've memorized them. I can cite all of them to you by memory. And then, something comes before council for us to consider. So, that's a package of things from the administration. Here's the 17 things that we would like to do in the next fiscal year. And here's the thing, and here's the outcome we're trying to achieve, and here's the dollars, and here's our recommendation of how it fits to the strategic plan. And then, we go and we say, "Okay, of the 17 things you brought us, these 15, we agree, those fit with the strategic plan." And then, we go, "Okay." And that is about four times the amount of money we have to spend this fiscal year. So, then, we say, "Okay, so which ones are we going to do?" And then, we go into a relative, this is all hypothetical, I'm just guessing here, a relative thing of saying, "Well, you know, what if we did this one and this one?" Because that kind of- kind of talks about these two areas, and then we'll move this one over here, and we'll talk about this area. So we're kind of covering the bases, or we say, no, this year, it's all going to be about mobility, so we're, we're going to take the four transit ones, or, you know, we sort of play, start playing scenarios, and we're weighing these 16 things that we could possibly do and to select the four that we can afford to do. Is that kind of how, how you envisioned it would work?
Yes.
And there's some arm wrestling in there, maybe?
Yeah, maybe so.
Okay.
And horse trading.
Okay, I'm, I'm excited about that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that is what we envision, we envisioning it happening to some degree twice. I mean, you're going to have some of that conversation, perhaps with all the financial clarity. We'll, we'll try to walk into that May-June conversation each year saying, this is what we think it looks like, what you have available financially speaking, and perhaps from time, you know, staff time, resources standpoint. And, so we'll have that conversation, May-June, and then when we come back in October for budget deliberations, we'll say, this is what we're, what we really truthfully felt we could afford, but do you want to make some changes?
And so you will have discovered by that time that things are much cheaper, and you say, now what three things do you want to add?
Yeah, we might. We might, yeah, absolutely. That's a possibility.
Or the other way.
Anybody else? Because this really is, I really want to make sure when we leave the room tonight that everybody sort of has the sense, I think Chris just got of what this might feel like. Just for anybody watching at home, this is not how we've necessarily done it before. This is a first-time strategic plan and a first-time council touch pre-budget in this format, so this is new.
Oh, sorry.
Aww. Little inside joke, a little 911 joke. So, you know, I just want to say that, you know, if somebody missed the first hour of this meeting and is wondering why we're all so quiet on this subject, right? It's, I mean, the sense that I got was that there's a number of concerns, right, around how we actually go and implement this. And I think that the, the, the task isn't going to be, I mean, I feel like we, I personally feel like we've talked it through today. I think the administration understands what the, what a number of council members have expressed as concerns about how this is going to get used in the budgeting process, and the proof is going to be in the budgeting process. So that's why I don't have anything else to say.
Councilmember Walsh.
So on that process, I think you've described it well. My only ask is that other cities around here have done this and have moved to a budgeting by priorities, which I know we're not there yet, but they obviously have gone through the learning of what was difficult about that, and I sure gosh darn hope that somebody has gone over and talked to Redmond and asked what worked, what didn't, so that maybe we don't have to go through as much pain.
Sure, and some of us have also lived that personally.
Fantastic.
So I'm just going to pick up on where Lindsay was going, which I think is just spot-on, is it's going to be horrible the first time we do this. Okay, it's not going to be horrible, it's going to be a really great learning opportunity the first time we do this. And I think that, from my perspective, and I think I shared this with the mayor and with Brian, is when, when we go into this, we have to go in with our eyes wide open that we're learning something new, we're developing some new skills, and we've got some new tools. And so, we don't want to, you know, hurt ourselves badly, but we have to recognize that we're, we're going to have some difficulties here, and we have to be prepared for that, and we have to prepare to learn from it, and then commit to getting better at it. And, and that's how we will get to be a really highly effective organization, and, and we have to do the same thing not only with the process, but with the plan. So we can say, look, okay, we built the plan, we did the best we could with what we had when we had it, and, and then we applied it, and we found that it didn't work quite as smoothly as we wanted to, so how are we going to change the process of how we use the plan? And how are we going to adopt the plan so that it better supports our process? It's a tool, it's nothing but a tool, and, and we have to recognize that we have to have the, the tool and the skill synchronized for us to get the most out of it. I'm off myself, Box.
I just wanted to echo some of what Councilmember Ray talked about, is that, that I think as we go forward, we know that this is new, and we know that there may be some struggles. This is a learning experience, and, and I think if we're, I think we'll all be very diligent around that and being able to go through the process. I've got lots of different processes in my mind about things that I've done, but I'm also thinking about what we went through on the Human Services Commission when we really changed the way the grant funding was happening and breaking things into buckets and looking at budgeting in a different way. And it really was, it really was tough, but in the end, we came out with such a much better product, especially after going through some lean processes and then also doing post-mortem when, when we had finished. And I think in the end, things became really strong, but just knowing, you know, that we're going to face that as we go in. But I think if we're all looking at it through that lens, it will, will come out with a better process.
I'm guessing that the mayor's office will propose a balanced budget, and if all that is aspired to be done, and some of it obviously being inspired by the strategic plan, if a new revenue source would be required, it'll be in that proposal, will cause very specific actions. Now, when I think about it that way, that feels like about every budget we've ever been part of. And the difference to me simply feel, seems to be that there will be a clearer lineage between the proposed items and their justification. That seems to add clarity to the process, to me. I'm not anticipating this as something that's going to feel and look and sense really different. I actually sense it as something that'll be, it'll be more clear, and you'll, and our ability to question, your ability to explain, will be based upon a strategic plan rather than something we're not certain about. So I would, might, so as you've outlined the process, and what I would anticipate is that, I don't know what the deliberations are going to look like, but there's additional structure, there's a, there's a, there's a greater framework than we had before. Those tend to help processes.
So, I, I just want to clarify, because what I heard Paul say, which I, I like, is a little different than what I said. Because in the pre-budget thing, I was envisioning that you would come to council, this is pre-budget, with a handful of things that could in fact not be a balanced budget, and say, okay, you guys, pick which ones are your priorities. Instead of coming to the council with a balanced budget, says, here's our priorities, and they balance, and then we'd kick some out, maybe. So I guess, which way are you envisioning it?
I sort of heard both, actually. So I do think this, this June session about pulling out the strategic list of action item, potential action items, and proposing some of them, it's still not going to be known if they can be fully funded, thus generating a balanced budget, or whether there'll be a new revenue source identified. That will come in September, but I think it is, it's, it's, it's what, June is the way you envisioned it, and the preliminary budget is the way Paul stated it. I think you both said it. I think you're getting both of those.
Okay, great. I mean, and that, and that makes sense to me. I just, I, I like the idea of having that June discussion where there's more fluidity around what, what the options are, and that it's not, it becomes our choice, or our input into how to balance it.
Heard that from you.
Okay. I'm consistent.
You are consistent.
So, my thought ties in to number four, and I'll talk about it more on number four, about is it a budget tempered vision, vision or a fundable action plan? But one thing I think that will be important, that we'll find out more as we actually go through the first year, is that I think there are more things in the action plan than we're going to be able to do in the first year or over all the years of the plan. And so then, I think one thing that we'll have to think about in budgeting, and probably ahead of budgeting, is how we want to, or if we want to think about balancing across the areas? Because we could just start saying, well, mobility is top of mind for a lot of folks, we have a lot of items, they're going to be big-ticket items, should we weigh more heavily in one area, or should we try to consciously think these are our goal areas and balance across? Because I don't think there's really guidance to that, so that'll be up to us, and I think that'll be a big, a big decision point and something for us to struggle with, but I guess we'll get there when we get there.
Okay, so after the break, we'll come back and go through each of these again to get direction. My recommendation on this one is, you need to have the discussion you need to have, but I don't think you need, I don't think there needs to be direction on this unless you have, it seems to me it's the discussion is the point on this one. So that's my recommendation. The second one, specifically, should the city leadership and services goal, which is one of the goals, include an additional objective that addresses the city's fiscal challenges? And pulling from a couple of examples from other cities, you might adopt an objective, you might add an objective to that list. Currently, currently, the, the city leadership and services goal has two objectives. One is the city is actively sustaining and equitable and welcoming city government, embracing diversity and fostering meaningful, inclusive, and varied civic engagement. The other one is, the city is utilizing high-performing internal systems to effectively and efficiently serve the Issaquah community. I probably should have read the goal first. The city leadership and services goal is, leadership and accountability in the delivery of public services for a growing and diversifying community. My question then, based on the conversations, is should we add an objective that, something along the lines of, my words, not yours, the city's fiscal sustainability is strengthened through efficient, effective, transparent, and accountable programs? Just stating that you're, so, Councilmember Walsh.
Questions or feedback?
Just discussion. No.
I mean, this seems like one of the bullet points under Beth's job description, to me.
And I, just to maybe talk about what we heard a little bit, it's that in, from different council members, there was a different level of concern over putting out a strategic plan and knowing that you can't fund the potential action items. And saying that only because we recognize that we are not rolling a dough and don't know what's going to happen next year, could have more money, could have less money, and that that constraint isn't actually anywhere in our plan yet that says it's going to be tough to do this, we're going to have to look hard to do this, we're going to have to look at what we already do in order to do this. That's not inherent in it. It has shown up in other strategic plans in this, this economic timeframe. It has showed up elsewhere, just not, not in ours.
Councilmember Hunt, then Councilmember Walsh.
So I was in the, the city leadership and services discussion, the ad hoc committee, when we discussed this, and at the time, I recall thinking, basically, this is a given, that we should be fiscally prudent, we should have fiscal sustainability is strengthened through efficient, effective, transparent, and accountable programs, and so, yes, we should do that, but also, yes, this is sort of obvious, and maybe it doesn't need to be in the plan. But I think that in retrospect, even if it is something that we think we're doing and, and know we should be doing, I think we should also put it in the plan and just give it a little bit more visibility that we're acknowledging this, acknowledging the importance of fiscal sustainability. So I would, I would like to see it.
Or you could propose your own words, because Brian and I were telling you what we thought we heard, and these were the words Brian came up.
Another way, another way to do this would say, improve the city's financial position, you know?
Yeah.
Or something.
So that we have the money to do everything.
Councilmember Walsh, and Councilmember Wintersheim.
So I think there's a difference between saying, hey, we need to make some improvements to financial management processes, which I could see as a potential action in there, or I could just see as, hey, that's a known thing, and we're going to do it. I think that's entirely different from the idea of, we don't have enough money to do all of the things, because that's number four. So, am I understanding it correctly that number two is about financial management? Or is it about there isn't enough money to cover all the things that we want to do?
Great question. It's up to you. The thing that, the thing that, the thing that made it show up on this, the thing that made it show up on this screen is that a whole bunch of the conversation during our individual conversations was about the city's difficult financial situation, and it's hard to do budgeting when there's not enough money, and, and it felt like that very important topic that you were spending a lot of time on was underrepresented in the plan. That's why it's there. What you want to do with it is entirely yours. Councilmember Wintersheim.
Be helpful if somebody could describe to me our difficult financial position. We've been able to pass balanced budgets, and we've had growth, and I think the breadth and quality of services, core services, hasn't suffered. So I'm a little bit unclear on this challenge that we have. I think when you look at it from, as, I'll use your word, kind of, what was your word you used? Management. How you describe that, that this financial management. I guess, what I want to get around to saying is, this reads to me like it should be in our financial policies. And, and we have, I mean, there's a lot stated in there as well. I think those aren't just all actionable, or somebody just, Gabriel's MacBook just went off air. Thank you. So that's my first reaction. I like this as a, as a financial policy objective. Now, we are aware that there are something to do with some processes and systems and some opportunity for improvement. We've discussed that, and I hope that's not getting, that in and of itself is not kind of, kind of muddying things up here. I'm, you know, that, that, Beth made her presentation, we talked about that, let's go do this, that's a, that's an issue, we have to, there's external forces driving on that. That stuff will never go away, right? We have those duties and obligations, and those should be captured in our financial policies to achieve those outcomes. So that's my first reaction to this.
Okay. Councilmember Walsh.
So, I think that our needs on the financial management improvement side is handled under the last action on CS2, which I guess is city leadership and services, which says, update financial information to be accessible, clear, and available on a regular basis, which if we're doing our financial management right, that would be the result of. So I don't feel like we need an objective or an action on that separate of what still needs to be discussed in number four.
Okay, Councilmember Mart, and then Batiste, and then.
I was plus-one-ing the idea that, I think what we're really talking about is what's in four. I mean, I realize some, there are different things, different people are talking about, but, but primarily, it'll.
I too feel like we, when I read that language, especially because it's strengthened through, it doesn't, I guess the way it's worded is not very action-oriented. I feel like we're covering it in number four, but I had actually a question for Councilmember Hunt, just, just because you were talking about this, and you, you were on the leadership, you were in the leadership group. So it sounds like that, it was discussed, and then it was decided that that didn't necessarily need to be in there, and then it came up some more during discussion?
Yeah, it was in the earlier version, there was something a lot like this, and we talked about it, and we basically came up with, yeah, this is like a job, a financial policy, this is probably in a job description, that somebody is going to do this, and so it doesn't belong in the city's strategic plan, which sets the community's expectations. I think now, after seeing, I mean, my, my opinion now is after seeing Beth's presentations about all the work that we need to do on financial management as a city, and that sort of heightened awareness, I think maybe the wording here isn't right, but I would like to see an objective, and I also don't think that having it as an action is adequate to meet my concern, because the actions, as we've said, are these potential things that might address an objective, but this, I think, should be an objective, something that we are taking steps to improve. So I, I would like to see it there. And it was in an earlier version, and we sort of had this kind of a discussion, and at that time, I thought that it, that it was somewhere else in our other plans and obvious, but now I think, even so, I would like to see it there to set community expectations, to make it clear that we are prioritizing it, it's part of our strategy, it's something that's important.
I don't, I would just say, I, I do, do feel like it's I don't, I would just say, I, I do, do feel like it's covered in number four, but I also don't have a problem calling it out in this way as, with, with a separate, separate objective.
Do you have something you want to add?
Before we go to Councilmember Ray, I just wanted to talk with Councilmember Goodman, makes us all a little thumbs up, thumbs down. You don't actually have to go through that now, because we want you to take the break and come back.
I was just plus-one-ing.
Yeah, plus-one-ing. And then, actually, City Administrator Moon wanted to jump in, and then we'll go to.
Not, not to object or discount anything that has been said, but just to make it clear, just to make it clear, we have the strategic work plan, right? And then, we are still anticipating, we are going to have to bring forward critical services, core services, work plan items. This is at the top of that list, right? And I, I think we've articulated that to all of you. So, I understand the desire to make that more apparent to the public, but I also just wanted to say very clearly, this is, this is at the top of the list on that core services work plan.
I don't think there's any disagreement that you need to do this.
Yeah.
The question is, should it be in the plan?
Yes.
So I was also part of the, what do we call this one? City Leadership and Services AS team. And what we did was, we took the financial systems, and we rolled it into objective number two, which talks about high-performing internal systems. So it just used a broader umbrella to capture that.
Yeah.
So, I don't have a problem if we want to call that out, but I kind of feel like, we have lots of internal systems that all have to work. We just happen to have one that's in particularly need of attention right now. But I agree with Paul, I think it, it fits in our fiscal, financial policies more tightly, or more accurately, and then, from a strategy perspective, our objective is to have all of our internal systems, be they HR, be they finance, be they, you know, motor pool, that they all really work really well.
Okay. Councilmember.
And it just adds one more thing to the plan.
Let's keep going, and like I said, after we take a break, we'll come back and make decisions on these. Oops, I know, didn't mean to do that. The third, the third, teasing you with a break.
That's one of those action items up there, implied promise.
So, the third, the third one was, should, should we revise the living wage objective? And I'm recommending that you revise the first objective under social and economic vitality. Two, there is an increase in jobs from a mix of businesses that allow local workers to afford to also live in the community. Just an edit, not changing the intent, just getting words out that weren't working for some folks. There was also the proposal that you could combine this with the fourth objective, which would land you with language that said something like, there's an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah, providing jobs that allow local workers to afford to live in the community, or some such words. So there's kind of two parts to that, what's on the table. Councilmember Martin.
Part one, I get, I get that there's some ambiguity out there about the term living wage. I think that some of us thought we understood what it was, but it is a term of art in some circles that confuses things. I think this modification would be helpful in clarifying what it is we're searching for. I'm not in favor of the second part. That, that is a, that is a proposal that has been brought up several times, and I haven't, I, I think they're separate topics, and, and each deserve their own objective.
Councilmember Ray, then Bateese, and then.
I'm done.
Councilmember Bateese. Make sure credit for that comment.
We talked a lot about, about the words living wage, and I, as we were able to have our conversation, I think that, for me, as I look at the wording, the intent that I was looking for is here without using the word living wage, so I'm.
So this, this change works for you?
It does, and I'm, I'm going to come back to merging the two. I'm still thinking about that.
Thanks.
So, I will just speak to why I support merging them. I think if they have two, so I'm concerned about resources and where we spend our resources. And so if you have two separate objectives, and you've got, and we've, we've talked about the need for a mix of different types of businesses for various reasons, then you have potentially two, two items that compete with each other. And so if you have, if you're, if you've got staff working on trying to get a mix of businesses, but yet, some of those mixes, you know, and we're always going to have businesses that don't necessarily provide what we consider to be wage levels that allow people to live in our community, then you've got competitions with resources, and do we spend any time on businesses that are not providing wages that allow people to live here? So I like combining them, because it says we want to accomplish that, and, but we're not excluding anything. The other thing that troubles me a little bit about keeping them separate is that, and maybe the, you know, we got a comment from Steve in our emails today, right, at five o'clock, and it was about whether we have data to support how many folks would actually choose to live here, even though we had an increase in jobs that allowed people to live here. So I know around the table, we don't necessarily all live where we work, and maybe, you know, we, I'm fortunate to be able to do that, but people choose to live where they live, not just because they have a job that provides them a wage that allows them to live there, they live in those places because that's where they grew up. They live there because that's where those kids are in school, and just because you got a new job doesn't mean you're going to move to where your job is, even though it provides you a great wage, or just a wage that allows you to move. But I like combining them, because I think it sends the message to our folks who are working on this, that this is what we're wanting, but they don't compete with each other.
Councilmember Walsh.
Plus one on all of that, plus it makes the three objectives in that area very clear. Living wage jobs with that definition, affordable housing, and reducing inequities with services and resources. I think that makes it much clearer than two that are related to business. Yeah.
Councilmember Goodman, do you have something else you want to say?
Well, I was just, I think in your materials, you had a com, I've just sketched out what I thought might capture both of them in the one, and it would be increase in a mix of business, sorry, I wrote it down somewhere. Just since we're going to come back to it, we can think about it. There is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate or expand in Issaquah with wage levels that allow local workers to also live in the community.
So, I want to do a little process check. When I flashed you with the break slide, I heard a palpable reaction. So, so my vision of what needs to happen before we go home tonight is that we walk through the other five of these. I think the next one's going to be a big discussion item, and then I was thinking we would circle back and make decisions about each of them, some of which will be easier than others. My instinct tells me we probably should take a break, but what, what, or do you want to try and get through them the first time, and then take the break to give you time to decide on the decisions?
Can we finish up number three, and then take a break?
I thought we were finished on number three.
Well, you made a proposal.
But you don't have to vote on it until we come back. This is really just working the way through, letting you think about it, ask questions, and then, yes, you're going to have to.
During the break, maybe we can just write it up there, and then.
Oh, that's a great idea. That's a great idea.
It's a break?
Sure.
Yeah. So why don't we take.
It'll be behind time, right?
We're, we're running a little behind, but why don't we take 10, and then we'll come back, walk through the rest of the list, and decide if we need another break before we go back through. So, back together. Share some of your thoughts on these decision points. We're not trying to make decisions at the moment. Once we've been through the last, we've been through three, once we get through the last, the other five, we will circle back and then walk back through them, and see if we can make fairly concise decisions. We'll discuss them further if we have to. I think this next one's probably going to take some discussion. And, and it intersects with the conversation we were having just a few minutes ago about the city's challenging financial situation, so I acknowledge those are connected. So, the, the, the sort of, this is about the, the implications of the actions being listed in the plan, and there are several nuances to that, and depending on which of you, Mayor Polly and I were talking to, sort of how it played out went different ways, but it seemed like it was all about the actions that are listed currently as potential actions, and at least the, at least the, the construct that was presented is, these are here to illustrate how the plan might get implemented, as opposed to say, this is what's going to happen. That was the intention of the draft that went out, and you all made a decision that it was better to have them in there illustrating possibilities than to not have them in there, because it would be less clear, even though you weren't all comfortable with all those actions. That's how we got to what went out to the public. So then my questions are, and from your questions are, is this plan an ambitious vision that is tempered by current budget realities, or is it a practical and funded action plan? That's one question. The second question is, does including the potential actions imply a promise to prioritize and fund those actions? Or are they just illustrative, and you haven't really promised the community they're going to get those actions? Brian, can you go hit Gabriel's MacBook? Oh, sorry.
How did you know what it's called?
Gabriel's is trying to get attention. And.
The quiet ones, or the trouble.
And the third, the third thing is, should the council edit the actions as a group, or offer informal suggestions and delegate that? So my recommendations on each of those, and I've had sort of informal suggestions, that I'd be more overt with recommendations, so here we go. I think it would be helpful for you all to discuss whether it's a, whether it's a vision versus a practical action plan, and informally direct the staff to adjust the introductory language in the plan, so that it's clear about what your intent is. The second one, I don't, I don't think, my recommendation to you is that, I don't think listing the potential actions should imply a promise, and the strategic plan's language should be clear on that, that you aren't implying that they are just illustrative. And third, on whether the council should vet and edit the actions, I would encourage you to not do that, but rather to offer informal suggestions, including those you've already made, and delegate final decision on how the wording on those actions is to Emily's discretion, the staff and the consultants can work on it, but Emily would be the final call. And my primary thing on that is, if we try to go through and get council consensus on all of those actions, I think it's going to take a tremendous amount of additional time, and there's all kinds of implications of budgets in future years, and that, it just feels inordinately complex, so I'm saying stay out of it. And if you have suggestions, make them to us, and we'll make sure that they're there. So those are my recommendations. So I would just put on the table, just your discussion of this ques, the three parts of that, vision versus, you know, tempered vision versus practical action plan, do they, the actions imply a promise, and should you get into the wording? Councilmember Martin.
I, I think the question at the high level is, where's the dividing line between what the council wants to own and what we want to have the administration own? And to me, these all have a related, I mean, the answers to these are coupled sets, because whoever owns it should own it, right? If council should own it, and I'm, I'm sort of agnostic, I mean, if council wants to own it, I think it is a bunch of work, as you said. If a majority of council wants to own it, we should own it. But I mean, that means we need to approve, we should see the sequencing of it, we should see an estimate of how much work it is in each of the five years. If this really is a fundable action plan that council wants to take ownership to, I think, I think there's a number of steps, and I wouldn't want to see it done halfway, right? Where we sort of took ownership of, here's the things that we want, but we're not saying, can we afford them, and do we have the staff to do them? I mean, those, those are questions that I think we need to answer if we want to, if we want to own those. So, either, either, yeah, either, who's the quarterback? And the other answer is fallout from there.
Councilmember Winters. As we develop this, I did not process these actions as something I was making a five-year commitment to.
It says it's a.
I thought it was longer.
It says it's a five-year plan, so, so I, I, as we were going through this process, I thought we, I thought we were, but I guess it doesn't matter what, what each of us thought as much as it is right now, whether, what we think about budget-tempered vision or fundable action plan. I think it is an action plan that is tempered by the realities of our budget constraints, so it's kind of a hybrid.
Councilmember.
I'd like to come to.
It's a matchup.
It's a matchup.
So I, on the, on the previous part of our discussion, we had those concepts that we all agreed on. One of them is that this sets community expectations, so that's my big sticking point with this one. I don't think that a strategy should be a vision. I think that vision, and maybe it's just that word, but to me, it really sound, it really rings wrong, that we would have a, a vision, and that our strategy would be a vision. So I think that it's closer to, for me, I have been thinking of it as closer to an action plan, it's a, it's a plan, maybe it won't be exactly the same, and we have those checks in there to change it over time, but I still think it should set expectations. And so, I, I would like it to, if, it's, and I also think promise is not the right word, but I think it should correctly set expectations. So if we have a plan that we know is vastly overestimating what we at the current time think we will, will be able to do in five years, I think that's not setting expectations, and that's my biggest concern right now about the whole plan.
I was gonna. Sorry. Oh, Lindsay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I was going to say more, but then Mary Lou looked right at me, and all the words disappeared. I'll show why that happened. It just did.
I'm so daggard.
No, no, well, yeah, I felt that too. The, what I, you know, we didn't have that finance part of the conversation as much as I was saying, as much as anything, and, and I thought them as, you know, that, you know, they were, they were illustrative, they all sound really good, but it was always with, in my mind, there was always this caveat, there was always this caveat that we are going to have to, you know, do the financial part of the equation. That's what I meant to say, so I, I think that, that this is a, however you want to say it, is, I'm on that side of, this is a budget-tempered vision. To your point, I, and I think that's a valid one, but I believe that, positioned correctly and said correctly, I don't think this is hard to do, and I think we're kind of there already, I will bank on the average reader understanding that we caveat this, that this is, we say that, we introduced this correctly. I think the more informed reader will recognize, it's a really difficult thing to put together a five-year fundable plan when you haven't talked about the financing side. So I, I think with the right type of introduction, and I think that would align with how I went through this process. I'm okay with him in there, I think this is a budget-tempered vision, this is a vision, these are illustrative examples, we still have to go through the hard work, but they are illustrative, and I think we'll probably, we'll talk about all of these, and when we really get down to it, we really get down to the push and shove on some of these, they'll morph, and those are, and that'll be good, right? And that's what hasn't happened here. So I want to, that's, that's right. Think about it. Councilmember Walsh, and then Ray.
So I think the important thing in communicating to the public is how we are going to use this, whether, once we come to a consensus about whether these are stretch goals, or exactly what we're committing to do 20% of the time over the next five years. exactly what we're committing to do 20% of the time over the next five years, and I think the part that is confusing to me in looking at the actual draft strategic plan is that page 11, which comes right before each of the sections with mobility, talks about how the plan works, and it's basically a definition of what goals, objectives, and potential actions are, but it doesn't talk about how we use them. How we use them is saved for page 24, which is after each of the five sections, and that's kind of our caveats of, you know, here's how we're gonna prioritize things, and everything's interpreted by the budget. So I almost think, I don't know whether that needs to move up, or whether just portions of it needs to move up to say, here's how we're going to use the plan, and here's the way we're looking at those actions. And I think that allows us to be clearer before we state, here's all the things we want to do, instead of saying afterward.
So that's an argument for, it's not a promise that we're gonna do all these things, and we should say that a little more bluntly upfront and clarify it by rearranging the order. Councilmember Ray.
I don't like the notion of saying it's a five-year plan, that seems like something they tried in the Soviet Union, and it never works. What we have is a five-year planning horizon, and this is a rolling horizon. So I don't envision that we're gonna do this, and then five years from now, we're gonna do it again. We're gonna do this, and we're gonna keep rolling this forward, because our world is too dynamic to think that we are smart enough to figure out what five years from now looks like. So in my estimation, this is a budget-tempered vision, and as we move towards biennial budgets, those become our two-year chunks of a fundable action plan, and we're rolling those forward. So when we have the big budget year, we'll do a two-year plan, and then we'll revise it, and then we'll do a two-year plan, and we'll revise it. I think as we start to move towards biennial budgets, and we put those under the umbrella of this strategic plan, we actually start to have different levels of granularity with different planning horizons that have different levels of specificity that reflect our ability to see into the future and to plan into the future. So that's my thinking, I don't even know where I'm going, other than to say, the two things are inextricably linked, and the migration to a biennial budget actually makes this a more powerful process.
And that could probably be said more strongly in the explanatory language. Councilmember Batiste.
So I too did see this as a budget-tempered vision, I, as we were talking about and looking at the action plans, we were talking about them, at least my view of that, is that those were examples, and that really that this was gonna come down to what was fundable, but I don't think it's as clear as it could be. Councilmember Walsh just pointed out a couple of ideas, but I think that when we have the action plans listed, we actually have to have language around those action plans and keep spelling it out, that these are.
So when you said "it" isn't as clear, you mean the way "it" works related to the actions and that they're future-budgeted? That's what the "it" was in that sense.
Exactly, and that they're examples.
I don't ever want to go down in a vote as being undecided, because that's just not me. So I will say that I think there's arguments either way, I just, I gotta say, from a clock standpoint, I think we kind of have to, I am gonna side with the budget-tempered vision, because we just don't have the materials in front of us right now to take on a proper review if it's the fundable action plan, and I think it would be a substantial delay. So I don't think it's a bad idea, I just think we find ourselves not able to execute that way in the way that I would like to if we were going to execute that way.
On the council review of detailed action wording part, I am not interested in doing, or I don't think it would be very useful for council to do a detailed review of the action wording, I do think they will change over time and morph over time. But one thing I would ask, and this came up a number of times in the public comments, and also in people just talking to me about the plan, is that in the plan, in the actions in the plan, there is a lot of planning and measuring, and I would really like just sort of a review of that to see, and if those are in there as actions, to have the action that results from that plan, so that it's clear, because as was referenced earlier, we have a lot of other plans in the city, so this plan is, in some ways, beholden to those other plans, and then within this plan, we set ourselves up for a lot of other plans. And I think that if we are setting the actions, we're setting the expectations for what we're gonna do with those actions in a broad sense, I would like to make sure that those are really action-oriented examples of what we're gonna do, not what we're gonna plan to do.
Councilmember Waters, then.
I would urge caution on just as an oversimplified word, examples, I think there are much more than just examples.
How does potential actions work?
They're the seed list. It's not uncommon for a complex work plan for some type of special work group to put that first proposal together, and it's thoughtful, then there's meaning behind all of that, but then when you go to the actual development or implementation of that, it goes through another iteration, and I think just to call them examples is to maybe water down what we've done, and it's almost like, it almost feels like a caveat, well, okay, those are just examples, I don't really know what you're gonna do, and I don't think that's what we mean.
That's a fair point, they were serious proposals by staff, I should be not, you know, we shouldn't be trivial about where they came from.
I'm just really concerned about, starting now at the very end, to use the word vision instead of the words action and plan. All along this whole process, this has been a strategic plan with action items, I think we can make it very clear that it's a rolling five years, that it's tempered by budget constraints and resources and, you know, what we have to work with, but if we come out of this whole thing with a vision, then we are just going to be even, my predict, even less disciplined and holding ourselves accountable what we shouldn't be doing, which is different from, which is different from whether or not that, I think that specific action items are specific at this point, I think those are, most all of those still have to be talked about and budgeted and planned for. I would be concerned just shifting it all over to vision.
Councilmember Barnes?
So I just want to say, I totally understand that concern, and I can see where that's a challenge. I mean, I think that we have a vision as a city, we discussed what that vision was, right? This is, we're just saying that for a plan, we're gonna go down to the objective level, right? And this council is going to decide down to the objective level, and then I think, I think where this is gonna wind up at the end of the day is, that we're gonna decide down to that level, and then we're going to let staff present to us at the budget at the action item level. So this is a plan, it's more than a vision, and it's just that the council part of it extends down to the objective level.
Let me just, I feel a need to sort of try to clarify. I wasn't in any way suggesting you change the title on the document to vision, and I was more trying to reframe a conversation that happened in one of the things about, is this an ambition, or is it a funded strategy? And I was trying to figure out a way to write that up, so that it just, it was just.
Yes, I was just gonna say too, those words are just words we put together after the interviews, but definitely hearing that this is an action plan, and that although you haven't done a thumbs up or thumbs down, and we'll get there, that people generally like the word tempered by fiscal reality, meaning whether we have revenue constraints or revenue surpluses, or we have to tighten things up, or we have opportunities to do more, but just looking to try and get it, because we do, we also, council and mayor get to sign, you know, there's a front piece to this, which is a letter, and so some of the words we hear from you and the phrasing we hear from you, I'd like to put together in a draft letter to issue a plan, and so that's why we're working so hard to try and understand where you are on this point, and then kind of mirror some of your words when we get to the point of writing the letter. So I think I'm allowed to write a letter, because she put her sign down. So Brian, do you want to, because we visited for the vote, do you want to go to the other three bullets that you have and see where we are in those?
Well, I was planning to be one of number five. Is that it?
Oh, okay. There are no other comments or questions on the other three bullets on there?
I feel like people have weighed in on all three of those bullets.
Great, or three, sorry.
So, number five, the last four of these are all about specific kind of wording on specific, well, three of them are about specific wording on objectives, but they're much more kind of specific. This one relates to the first objective under growth and development, that currently reads, neighborhoods retain their charm and distinctive character, pattern, and setting that includes both built and natural environment, and one of you in the written survey, and I think it came up in conversation, too, asked whether charm and distinctive character needs further definition, and my recommendation, reflecting on the conversations that led to this draft, is that I don't think you need to make a change here, I think your intent is clear enough, the definitions will get developed with the neighborhoods as part of implementation plans, guidelines, and codes. This exact point was discussed at the Ed Hock Council Committee in this room, and the upshot of that discussion was the language that's in the draft plan. So my recommendation would be, this is okay at the level of a strategic plan, but open to your thoughts or feedback.
I agree with the recommendation to leave it. I think charm, the words charm and distinctive character would, I don't think those words need any special definition, those would just be their regular plain meaning and how you might look it up in any dictionary. I think what would eventually be more defined is what is the charm and distinctive character of each neighborhood?
Any other comments? Number six is related to the, there's S-E, social and economic vitality, objective number three, there was a question, it currently reads, services and resources reduce inequities in health and well-being in the community. Question was posed, should it read, to reduce inequities in health and improve well-being, which is a reasonable suggestion, my recommendation would be not to change it, because I think the wording is exactly what was intended, which was, services and resources reduce inequities in health, and services and resources reduce inequities in well-being in the community. I think it was aimed at reducing inequities in those two things, I think that was intentional wording, but that's up to your feedback or comment.
Can someone diagram that sentence, and we will be able to understand the prepositional phrase and which words are modifying which parts? All right, I think it's great the way it's written.
Okay.
And I think we could wordsmith forever on that sort of stuff.
Oh, it's really, you're afraid that.
You were gonna make a diagram.
Miss Iclind was gonna be watching while I'm trying. Okay, I think that was a message to, oh, Councilmember Batiste.
I would say that we, my vote would be to keep the language as is in our discussion around this, I think that we spoke a bit about the wording and about the measurement, so it really was focused on reducing inequities, and improving is, in this world, is more complicated, and it gets into additional metrics, and I believe it as is.
There was a.
One more comment?
Are you moving on?
Not if your side is on.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with the group. I had the opportunity at one of my GMPB meetings to listen to a nationally renowned individual expert on inequality, and then we had a whole conversation that meeting about the planning process and inequalities, and inequalities that result from inadvertent and unintended inequalities just from land use planning. We're using that phrase here, we're talking about the human being because of the section that it's in, but I think at some point, I want the city, I want all of us to be able to have that conversation about inequality at other levels, including in planning, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Two more of these. Number seven, there was a suggestion or a question of, should the success measures be more refined? And, you know, right now, the success measures, as they're listed, there's a number of them at the bottom of each of the, in little circles, under each of the goal areas, and they currently say something, for example, total jobs, percentage of jobs affording you to live in Issaquah, or total business revenue, as a measurable thing. We haven't said what the current status is, or said a, so we don't have data on where we are, and we haven't set a target for what we're trying to do. My reaction to, should they be more refined, is yes, absolutely, they should be, but I don't think you want to, that's a complicated process, and some of these you will find during implementation are easier to measure and some harder, and there will be some work, and I don't think you want to hold up your strategic plan for that, and during the course of implementation, you will start to populate these, and you'll probably refine some of them, so my recommendation was not necessarily to do it right now, but by all means, do it. So Councilmember Walsh, and then Councilmember Barnes, and then Councilmember.
This is my major concern, I think I'm okay with delaying it, but I see a difference in the specificity of kind of the performance measures on different areas.
From one to the next, they're at different.
Yeah, yeah, like I really like the very specific nature of the ones around mobility that talk about each, their definite numbers, which is obviously easier with mobility, but then there's other things in growth and development that I just, I feel like particularly after seeing the community response to the survey, where a lot of people, you know, strongly stated, you know, no more growth, growth should pay for growth, you know, don't do growth until you have infrastructure, you know, all of those commentary, I feel like we might be missing something in that area around, you know, we have balanced growth of jobs versus housing, but we don't necessarily have, like, preservation of neighborhoods and charm, or maybe whether or not there was growth in the existing neighborhoods, or if we've done the growth in the valley area that we intend. So I have concerns about that, I'm willing to push it off, but I do want to put that out there, that I think we need to have a discussion about that, particularly as we're doing that first-year conversation.
Councilmember Barnes?
So I can only speak to the three subgroups that I went to, but in all three cases, there was lively and sustained discussion about what those measures should be, or shouldn't be, or could be, or couldn't be, or how the level of specificity could or couldn't be attained by a given success measure. So I'm eager to let these move forward for now, having reflected a very deliberate conversation. If there's specific things that people want to propose changing, if there's specific measures people have heartburn with, but I'd like to respect the subgroup process and move these forward.
I also am in agreement that we can move forward, but at the same time, I think these are currently, currently it will be difficult to measure our success because we don't know what our baseline is for a lot of these, and so if we make a dent in the percentage and ratio of jobs and housing relative to planned growth, then we don't have a sense on where we stand right now, and what is the, you know, it will be difficult. And so in the plans that I think are, in the plans that I like from other cities, one of them is Tacoma, and it has really clear. of them is Tacoma, and it has really clear target percentages, and then you can really measure where are we now, and what is our target, and how close are we, and how much progress have we made. So, I think at some point, for some of these, we will get to the point where we try to measure success, and it will be really difficult. And I would like to see these better defined, because I think it will make the plan stronger, and it will make us better able to actually implement or have impact with the plan. So, I, I agree, I don't want to hold this up, but I also would really like to see some more, more metrics around these.
Councilmember Winterstein.
I agree with those points. In fact, I'll go as far as saying, we actually don't have success measures, but we have our measures. What constitutes success is to be determined.
Fair point. I think everybody's clear on that one. I don't see any other signs up. So, then the last one of these was an observation at the end, that schools were on the list when we were earlier on in the process, and they got lost somewhere along the way. And so, the question then is, should, did we lose track of something the community was telling us was important? So, the question is, should schools be called out in the strategic plan? My recommendation here, I certainly, certainly get the ambition there, or the notion there, but I would say no change. This is a city government strategic plan. It's a strategic plan for the city municipal corporation of the city of Issaquah, and you don't have jurisdiction over the schools. If you really want to mention schools, you might say something about working with the school district on school siting, or services, or, or something to make that possible, but you can't, you don't have jurisdiction over the schools. You could probably defend that you were doing a strategic plan for the whole community, but that's not what we've been doing for the last year or so. It would kind of open up a can of worms to go there. So, Councilmember Hunt, and then Walsh.
Okay. So, in the initial survey, which is the one that we have the most information from the most people, because that was the initial go-around, in that one, there was this question about residents identified specific topics as being important in the community. Please rank these items one to five, one most important, five's least important. And in that process, education came up as, as important, and it came up actually as a bit more important than economy. So, I think it is important for folks, for sure. I understand and I'm aware that we are not in, we are not the school district, but at the same time, we do work with the school district, we work on them with things such as school siting. And so, I think this is important. It's also mentioned about 35 times by different folks in the latest survey, the word schools comes up. And in the overall section, it's one of the things, where do I talk about schools? Why didn't schools come up in the survey? So, even though it wasn't something for people to comment on, they commented on that, which I think, which I think does speak to the importance of it, and it, there are other things in the, in the strategic, strategic plan that we also don't have direct jurisdiction over. Quite a few things, I would say, that we are gonna work to cite light rail, we're not gonna be directly in charge of that. There are a lot of things like that. So, I think that I have a proposal for wording, but I think with the amenities part, where we are having amenities that meet the needs of the community, we should talk about working with the school to cite schools, and just, we can say, working with the school district, but it seems like it's important, and it seems like it should be part of our strategic plan, and it seems that it got lost somewhere along the way.
Okay. Councilmember Walsh.
Strong, plus one.
Councilmember Goodman.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna agree with that, with the, and it's not because I don't agree that it's, I don't, not gonna agree that it should be in the strategic plan. So, the, one of the biggest frustrations that I have experienced is, is how to work with the school district in a way that, that addresses the obvious problems that we see, overcrowding in schools. And the, the issue as I see it, is that we just, our, our organizations do different things and have different purposes, there are single purpose entity, we have multiple purposes, and the significant difference that we have is that the district is, has the sole responsibility for building schools and citing schools, and they are a completely different planning horizon than the city is. So, schools plan, school districts plan to build schools when the kids are here. We would like to plan for schools based on what our planning says, what our zoning says, where we think our growth is gonna be. It has been extraordinarily frustrating to try to work together when our purposes and our planning are completely opposite of each other. And so, what happens is, which is what happened a couple of years ago, is because we're not able to affect any kind of change, and I'm not sure the general public really understands how dramatic the difference is in the planning, then when it's overcrowding, we, the council, the city, is blamed for not being able to properly plan for schools. And that is super unfortunate, and it was super purposeful, even on some folks at the district, to, to create that perception in the public that somehow it's our fault. So, I think it's really, really important, and I would like, I would love to figure out a way that we could work together and be able to cite schools, but be, but it's not a negative, it is what it is. And unless we're, we're able to figure out a way to do that, it's a fruitless, frustrating exercise. And so, I don't, I'm not looking to add to the plan either. I do fully agree that I would, or do fully support our staff staying in contact with the district. We provide all of the data that we have on growth, all of it. And so, the district knows where the growth is going to be eventually, they know what land is available around here just as well as we do, and I don't think that we are able to do anything to make any progress in that area, even if we were to put it in the strategic plan. It doesn't mean I don't want to. It's been a goal for a couple of decades, and it's just really frustrating. So, that's why I wouldn't support that. It's not that I don't support the idea, I just don't think we can do anything to get us in a better place. Not that we don't get along, it's just that we're completely different in how we plan.
Councilmembers Walsh, Ray, and then Martz, and then Ray.
Okay.
Which have whatever order.
So, I think if we have other things in there, such as light rail, and highway teen, and any of the other things where we're working with different agencies and saying, this is super ultra important to us, that, that this is a similar idea. I experienced the same thing that you did about different planning timelines, when I was on the Planning Policy Commission, and we were looking at a 20-year plan, and the school district was looking at what's currently in maybe five years, but this is a five-year document. And I think it's essential for us to work with the school district and have those conversations, and maybe do some pushing.
So, I'm gonna agree with the, the core thrust of what Councilmember Goodman said. Couple of things, and this is a, this is a, this is a, this is a tough topic for me, because I came up through the PTA side of the house, and I, and I love to have my kids go to the school district. There's such a challenge in the two bodies having differing priorities and operating styles, and it even comes down to the, the, the charge that we have regionally. So, King County, countywide planning policies, PF-19 and PF-19A, describe a very specific and progressive and thoughtful process. It has no authority over school districts, it only has authority over municipalities. So, it tells us exactly how to have a progressive and thoughtful relationship with school districts, and it says nothing as to what the school district should need to do. And, you know, there's times when we have collaborated well with our school district and times we have not, but we don't have any standing other policies. And so, Councilmember Walsh, I just want to point out, you gave a couple examples with light rail, we are members of Sound Transit, right? With Highway 18, we're actually part of an inter-jurisdictional group in South King County that's trying to address Highway 18, right? So, we have a place at the table. We have no place at the table with what the school district does. We do reach out, council deputy president Baptiste and I, last year, spent time with the school district, with the school board president and deputy president, we're gonna try to do that again this year, as they've, they've formed a new leadership. But, you know, it is breaking bread and having a meal, it isn't sitting at a, at a table deciding how things should go. So, I'm loathe to put elements of that into a strategic plan where we actually have, you know, the, what is it? The definition of stress is having responsibility but not authority? That would, this would be an example of having responsibility but not authority.
Councilmember Ray Winterstein.
So, so Vicki, you had some language that you were thinking of. I'm, I'm kind of curious how, how we would integrate it before, and then I have some thoughts afterwards, but I want to start it with kind of where, where you were heading.
Um, so.
And you've used my time.
Sorry.
No, 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 I, I'm coming.
He's encouraging you.
I'm encouraging you to, to, to share what you're thinking.
Um, okay, so I went, so there's, there's one in, there's one in growth about.
Is that Walsh?
Yeah, there's one in growth about, across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to a livable community. So, I think that it dovetails best into that one, because I think most people's concerns are about the, about basically the, the services provided by schools, and the city does have jurisdiction over land use, and the city does work with schools to do siting. So, I think we do have a seat in the table in the land use, I mean, we, we do make the land use decisions.
So, are you suggesting that we just add the word schools into a list on that objective? Is that?
Well, so then, that would really make, that, I think it needs to be a little bit tempered by the reality that the schools are ultimately deciding the, the, the site of the schools, but I, I do think it fits into there. And I, I think maybe it just needs to be a wording change in that sense, because we also, as a city, we also will not decide where all of the services go in the city. And I think we make decisions that influence where services will go, it's not a direct link. And I, I also, I think, I understand that this is a difficult, that it's, that it's difficult, it's a challenge. I don't think that, I, to me, I don't think that because it's challenging, I think we should find a way to include wording about it, because it's so important.
Where are you, again, specifically?
The last objective on.
Is it objective across the city? Four.
So, so I think, it seems to me there's two things you could do here. One would be in that last objective that says, across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, and services that contribute to a livable community. You could direct, you could make a decision as council to add schools into that sentence somehow. Another thing you could do would be to suggest, staying out of the actions and the detail, but suggest that there be an additional action, or something that, that says work with the school district to enable something that, you know, as a possible action. That seems like two ways you could respond to this thought. I'm not recommending, I'm just saying, if you were gonna do it, that seems like two ways you could do it.
I'm, no, I'm still up. I, I, I was just a question, I have comments.
All right.
So, thank you for that, I really appreciate it. I agree wholeheartedly with, with Stacey and Tola about the different political subdivisions that are the school, than, than are the city, and the different areas' responsibility. That being said, I could get behind something about modifying, that's why I've asked the question, I could get behind modifying an objective that inserted, you know, after, say, housing type schools and services that contribute to a livable community. I think that that's within our scope, because just like we can cite, I mean, we can help services find a place to, to live, and we can find housing a place to live, and a remedy a place to live in our city, we can find, we can help schools find a place to live. And it doesn't just mean public schools either, it means other educational opportunities. So, I don't want to, you know, I don't want it to stand on its own as its own objective, like, you know, something like that, because I don't think that's appropriate, but I think as part of an objective like that, I could get, I could, I could support that. I think it does speak to the, to a global need, and yet also recognizes that we have limited authority in that space.
Councilmembers Winterstein, Goodman, and Hunt. I'll pass.
I'd say Goodman. I'd say Goodman, Baptiste, and Hunt.
So, I can, I can understand both sides of the conversation. I completely understand where Councilmember Hunt and Walsh are, are coming from in terms of being able to talk about schools and education, but I, this is just one, and I won't go through and repeat, just to plus one, what Councilmember Goodman and Councilmember Martz spoke about. And, and I struggle with putting something in where I feel we, we, we don't have a lot of, really any latitude to, to really make a difference. And if we added, for example, in that last bullet point, if we added the word schools, my concern is that it, I think when I was first on council, it was one of those things that, that I understood in the community, that there were a lot of people that would come and talk to you about schools and about education, and really just didn't completely understand that these are two completely separate entities, and this is how we work. So, I wouldn't want to add any language to our strategic plan that, that further, you know, added to sort of that, that, what is already complicated. I'm not opposed, if, if there were language, I would, I would want to hear that, but, but I do have a concern with, you know, adding, adding something to the list. The one thing that Councilmember Ray just said, however, just, I just had a little bit, you, you used the word education, you were talking about other educational opportunities. So, there might be a way to work through this, but, but I do have a concern with the same concern that was relayed earlier.
Councilmember Goodman.
Yeah, I think I would not support an, an extra bullet point down there. My big concern is that we, whatever this plan becomes, I don't want to send some sort of, I don't, do not want to imply that we can do anything more than we can do. And we have recently, I mean, we respond, I think, very responsibly and well to the school district. We just changed our codes, and I think some folks believe that we kind of play in that sandbox better than, than the school district plays with us, and, to be quite frank. And so, I am really concerned about putting something in here that implies that we have some sort of, duty's not the right word, but that we, we've made some sort of a commitment that we're gonna deliver on something that we literally cannot deliver on. So, I see the, that's all said, I see the language that says adding educational and other services, I could probably get behind that, I'm not sure that educational is the right word, and I like it better than schools.
So, let me take Councilmember Walsh's comment, and then I want to ask Councilmember Hunt to tell us about the things, she suggested a couple of things go up on the wall, and I want her to tell us what they are, but, Councilmember Walsh first.
I think you're absolutely right, that we should not suggest responsibility, or commitment, or anything. I do think that we need to be responsive to the community in their, their thinking that this is something that should be important, infrastructure-wise, before we do development, all of that. And I do think it is our, it should be our action to do more with the school district. Now, I'm coming on this and haven't been on here for a long time, and I know you've tried, and all of that is just really important.
So, I just want to make, I just want to make it clear that we cannot plan for schools when we're planning, we, when we're approving development. We, we cannot do that. Just, everybody knows, we cannot do that. It is not our decision, and the district will not build or plan for schools just because we're pressing really hard. So, I, I too feel that the angst, you know, raise my kids here, every year, the schools were crowded, that's because they planned them that way, just so you know. were crowded, that's because they plan them that way, just so you know. That gets new schools built. That's how they plan. So we cannot do anything to lessen crowding or to add schools any sooner than the community thinks we should. We can't. So I'm fine with the educational part. We've been, but we cannot do anything in terms of approving development, approving applications. That is not anything that we have any ability to do, no matter how hard we push and try. And so I just want to make it clear, if it's not clear already, we cannot. So that's my, that's, sorry.
Councilmember Ray, Winterstein, and Martz.
So our objectives are the outcomes we're trying to accomplish, and I'm going to go back to that. And so this last one is, we want to live in a city, and that city should have a wide range of public amenities, lots of different places to live, and services. And I think it's fair to say the other aspect of a really livable city is that there are educational opportunities in that city. And I think if, as much as we can influence, I mean, housing types, we have some influence over, but services, I mean, we need another Maxis World Market here, our World Cafe, you know. But, you know, but I'm not sure we're going to get one, just because I want one. So, but I think we can, you know, if we, I think that those are, the outcome I want to achieve as part of the strategy is that our city has those elements to it. So that's why, like I said, I couldn't get, I don't want to use the word "school district," and I really would like not to use the word, I mean, I could get to school, but I can't get to "school district." And I don't want to put another objective there that speaks to this, but as part of an attribute of a livable city, I think it makes sense to me.
Winterstein and Martz.
Agreed with the attribute, but I think the comments that are in the public comments that were references to the school district, we'd want to keep our strategic plan focused on our core services. And the idea to, suggestion of broaden it to say "educational," that's a, that's a topic much broader than I think what people were talking about. They were talking about the schools in general for their kids. Doing some type of business development or economic development and attracting some type of high educational, higher educational entity, that's, that's a strategy we could have talked about, but come April 16th, we haven't yet. We haven't made it one of those priorities. That's a pretty big lift for late in the game. So I, I, so I think that the comments about schools were targeted, about schools for children is, the school district, maybe they said or didn't say that. That's not part of our core services. I think it, therefore, I don't think it should be in. I think the whole conversation about the benefit of the community and the education value is valid, but because that's not part of our core services right now and at this stage in the game, I would...
Councilmember Martz.
So I, I certainly believe that good schools are a key part of a community, which is why I live here. But, you know, we don't have goals around our relationship with county, we don't have goals around our relationship with the state of Washington, both of which are entities that we have interactions with. And there's a give and take, can we have a nice breakfast with our state legislators once a year? And we talk to them more than that as the situation warrants. But we don't, I mean, we just, we can't presume to have influence that we don't have. It creates an expectation of, it creates an expectation of determinate, I don't even know what the right word is, that we have the ability to affect change that we don't have. So I totally agree we should have, look for opportunities, have better relations with the school district and influence how they respond to growth, but I just, I continue to not want to put it in for the same reason that we don't have stuff regarding the county and the state.
Kind of gotten to a spot. Before, we're just about to the point, we're going to circle back and try and make some decisions. I'm going to suggest we take a brief, kind of clear our heads break before we do that. Before we do that, though, councilmember Hunt has made a couple suggestions to Gabriel to write some language up there. And so I don't want to surprise people with that when we get there later. Could you share with us what your thinking is so everybody knows what you're doing?
I think it's just one. It's this, so it didn't seem that there was at least, I got the feeling that maybe adding an objective to, on number two, its own objective might not be the will of the body. And so if that is the case, I also thought we might consider, and also because councilmember Ray talked about how this, this was sort of in our previous discussions wrapped into internal services, just to call it out, with internal systems and financial management.
Which is, we're talking about city services, objective number two, adding the words...
Which currently says, "The city is utilizing high-performing internal systems to effectively and efficiently serve the Issaquah community."
And, and the suggestion is to add, have to say, "City is utilizing high-performing internal systems and financial management to effectively serve, to effectively and efficiently serve." That's just that, that suggestion's going to come up in a minute and I want everybody to know it was going, and there wasn't anything else that went up.
Well, then there was the schools.
The schools. And so what that says up there now is, "Across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, educational, and other services that..." So that was just suggested wording. So what I would suggest is we take, I don't know, five minutes, I just sort of feel like it'd give help if everybody stood up for a second. And then we're going to walk back and just walk back down one to eight and see if we can get thumbs up and whatever discussion we need. All right? Blank page that says "Letter from the Council and Mayor." And I think one of the smartest things I've done this year was leave that blank so far. But we have to get from where we are to, so I would put out there, maybe it would be helpful if, based on this conversation, you know, after we kind of go through these, we have a five-minute discussion about that, and you all throw out whatever you say, and then I'll offer to try and draft that, or the next version that's, that's going out. If not that, then you can think that's some other way to do it. But I would, I would make that offer to try, and it seems to me that would be a place to address something about the fiscal challenge and how, and what the, what the potential actions mean and some things like that.
I'm willing to try that, but it sounds an awful like that campfire thing where people each tell like a minute of a story and then you hand it off to the next one. And they tell the next minute, but we can see how it works.
I was just going to suggest we all visit about it for a few minutes, and that would be the direction I get. I wasn't going to try and string it all together in one run-on sentence, but...
Kind of like that.
Okay, 8:17.
So, so let's see if we can walk, walk through these items. So the first item was the relationship between the strategic plan and the budgeting process. I think that tonight you have had a robust conversation about that. You all understand it better, if not all the same way than you did three hours ago, and we don't need to do anything else tonight.
What's up, Congressman?
All right. Do we add an objective about the city's fiscal sustainability is strengthened? I think collectively you were, you were not going there, and I would have said, you were saying it was unnecessary. Councilmember Hunt made the suggestion that we edit the current objective to, that second objective there to "The city is utilizing high-performance internal systems and financial management to effectively serve the Issaquah community." How do you feel about that, adding financial management to that objective?
I don't like the way that's phrased.
It feels to me like leave it as is, and, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure you're not, I didn't hear anybody saying that you wanted to add this proposed objective. So I think we're basically, no action on the financial piece. Then there were some suggestion about the, the language related to what a job affords you to do. And the, my recommendation going in before the meeting was, there is an increase in jobs from a mix of businesses that allow local workers to afford to also live in the community. I heard pretty good support for that, edit. Then, then, so, so first of all, does that make sense?
Thumbs, looking good, looking good. Well...
Thumbs around.
Is it the second one?
Your second point.
Which is to an half.
Oh, okay. That, that half, I guess.
Well, there was a, there was a kind of a second thing about...
About, yeah, I was going to come to that second. So I heard, I heard that language was okay. Now the question is, do we want to merge that language with the objective about new, new businesses, new and existing businesses? I heard sort of passionate disagreement on that, so...
Probably need to read it. Probably need to read, it's really small.
I'll read it out. There's a proposed combination of two objectives to read. "There is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah with wages, sorry, with wage levels that allow local workers to also live in the community." And that would take the number of objectives from four to three because there'd be those two thoughts.
Do you need the word "local" in there? It seems superperfless. Allow workers to live in, also live in the city, as opposed to local workers.
Dave, in the second last sentence, can you take out the word "local" in front of workers?
And enable...
Oh, "enable" is probably better than, take out "local."
That's where we're at.
Change to...
And then change "allow" to "enable."
We got to it.
Enable.
Is this what you proposed?
That's okay.
Do you want to have conversation on this? Instead of we just jam out the thumbs and vote? I mean, we could have, councilmember Goodman proposed that we could have her say some words and you could respond to it.
I think I said enough before. I think everyone's heard the talk.
Go ahead, councilmember Martz.
So, so I'm a little confused because you mentioned a thing that you were concerned about, and I actually feel like the thing, one of the things that I thought I heard you say you were concerned about, might actually be worse, right? Because one of the things is, we don't want to say that we only want to support companies of a certain, you know, that are going to bring living wage jobs, right? We, we don't want an acid test in like companies that are bringing living wage jobs we don't want to support. I worry that merging these two together would actually make that more likely.
So can I address that? So what if it was to locate and expand in Issaquah with wage levels, including with wage levels that enable workers to also live in the community, including with wage levels? Or something that, so what I don't, I would like to solve what I think is the problem where we have the competing objectives. So that's what I'm trying to get at.
Batiste and then Winterstein.
So I'm still thinking about the language, but what's missing in that language is the word "jobs." And so I, what I was thinking, and I actually can't see that far right now, but to maybe edit it and say an increase in jobs through, to add the word "jobs" back in, I think would be important. And I'm still thinking about breaking those two apart, but it would be hard for me to get behind that language without the word "jobs."
Winterstein.
Tola said something interesting, like, it suggested that however we word this is somehow going to have a very measurable material effect on actually what happens. And I think this is an aspirational goal that would give, it gives direction to, say, economic development that, and if we include both phrases, that does, and it may already be there, but include both phrases, that says, you know, don't, don't, I don't want to, don't go recruit other retail that plays, that pays minimum wage. Focus on recruitment efforts and your whole strategy in this other sector. And maybe they're already doing that, but that's what that says to me, and I think that's our objective. So I, I do like them merged together.
Councilmember Martz and then Walsh.
I think that if it said something to the effect, I like the first part, there, there's an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah with an additional focus or an additional emphasis...
Lauren, how about especially those?
What are you trying to get to?
I want to get to with it, with, with extra enthusiasm towards people.
Is that the only objective for this? It's an addition, it's, it's a key objective, is that what you're trying to do?
I'm saying to have this focus, but have extra focus on the ones that are bringing salaries that enable people to live here, right? That this would be the focus, and you put with a specificity, with a special attention on employers that bring a focus with, with salaries. I, I don't know exactly how to say it, but if it said something like that, I would support.
Councilmember Goodman.
I think as long as we're keeping the four potential actions, we're giving the direction to economic development to both develop a living wage employer recruitment plan and expand support for small businesses and startup training, which covers both areas of the spectrum. And so I'm supportive of the idea of them being combined, knowing that the actions ultimately drive what we do in regards to those two different types of businesses.
So I, I think the way this is written is, it speaks exactly to what you were looking for, Tola. It doesn't speak to focusing on jobs that pay anything other than a level that allows you to live in the city. I mean, it's, it actually, the first one kind of Pac-Man the fourth one, and it's assumed it. So the first objective really is, is captured in that. So we're expanding businesses, but only ones that have a wage level that allows someone to live here. So we're not going to focus for this objective on expanding employment and jobs for businesses that don't pay a wage that allows you to live here. That's what that says to me.
That's what I was, I think it, the, the, the plan is, the, the plan says, this is where we're going to focus our resources, expanding businesses that bring us those kinds of jobs, jobs that have living wages. And that we're not going to focus a bunch of time looking for very low-wage jobs. They're going to come anyway, and that's fine, but that's not what we're lacking.
So I think that the proposal at the moment, sorry, I was extending my zip car. I'm going to be here a little longer than I thought. I think the proposal at the moment is that we make the adjustment, so we're talking about wages that afford you to live in, in Issaquah. I heard strong support for that. And the proposal at the moment is that that be combined with the new businesses one. And the way I heard the intent there is that the city has however many resources you have to support business retention and expansion, and that you would prioritize those businesses that are providing those kind of jobs over other businesses. It's kind of what you're trying to say that the objective is. And I'm hearing generally, folks are okay with that, and I would, I would say maybe we don't try to get the exact language tonight, we, we draft it out, and you can check it off next week when I question. Councilmember Martz.
So, so I thought we were trying to avoid, I guess, what everybody else is looking for. I thought we were trying to say, we want to put some general support, we want to put some general additional support into our business community because we think that's a strategic value. I think when we were in our subgroup, we said, there are two separate things. There is generally doing more to support our local businesses, and then there is trying to promote jobs that allow people to live here. And so, and I thought that that was a, I thought that that was a strong thing that was said in the subgroup. But what I'm hearing tonight is that the majority of the council is saying that with a finite amount of resources, they really want to focus that supplemental, any additional effort that we can do that would be part of this around those, the subgroup that are providing jobs that would allow people to live here in the city. It is different than what we said in the subgroup.
That was a brilliant characterization of exactly what has happened. Just, I think you just exactly stated what happened in the subgroup and what's happening tonight. So now, if you want to express your opinion, go ahead.
I just, I'm struggling a little bit because I think the subgroup, it was, it was loud, it was heard loud and clear in the subgroup that those are two separate efforts, and we want both of those efforts. And, and again, this is why, because it was a conversation to, slightly different, to bring these two together in the subgroup, it happened quite a bit. And it was like, no, we want to have these two distinct efforts, and so that's why I'm struggling a little bit.
Winterstein and then Goodman.
So I think if you look at the plan, sorry, you look at the plan, and if you combine one and four, you still have the same action items. But you don't have one and four competing with each other. You have one and four that, you have the, all of the elements of both, but you have the same action items, but then you're just, so that's, unless somebody else has, I think in that S1, action item go away. I wasn't thinking that. I'm sorry.
(laughing).
Councilmember Winterstein.
I'm just kidding, Brian.
I remember the subgroup. I'm pretty sure I made the recommendation, strong recommendation. I think it was enthusiastically embraced and accepted, and tonight I like that form.
Councilmember Batiste.
So, I was also in the subgroup, and I remember you making that recommendation. And so, I think that maybe just the one piece that's missing has to do with retention. And that's what keeps, I keep thinking back to, is we're talking about businesses that choose to locate, so those are new businesses, or expand, and we're just missing the piece of that retention, which I think is really what that conversation.
So, the proposal at the moment is, there is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah. I think that does, new and existing, so I think that's includes retention, I think that was the intent, with wage levels that enable workers to also live in the community. I think that's what's on the table at the moment. Councilmember Martz and then Hunt.
So, I have a question. Let's take, and I apologize, I don't know the name of it, but there's a great Indian restaurant that's over by Hobby Lobby that is always packed to the gills. There's people coming out the door. What's that?
It's basically like the Doza House.
Yeah, it's like the Doza House, right?
Yes, it's awesome.
They don't, they don't pay a wage that allows somebody to live in Issaquah. If we adopt this, are we saying we are not going to do anything supplemental to try to help businesses such as that one because they're not focusing on the wages that we want to focus on? That's my question.
Wait, so it's expand support for small businesses and startup training and development. The bullet points are the same, the action steps, actions are the same. So, if you look at the actions, you'll see.
Well, but we have been saying that maybe we don't own the action items, we let the staff own the action items, we own the objectives, and we try to let them.
Yeah, use them as a sword and a shield.
That's our unadministrative perspective on the table.
I just, I just really want to understand.
From an economic development point of view, it might be clearer to have one goal with, or one objective with four action steps because that becomes economic developments, marching orders, and they see that they have not competing action items like not, this is one person's body of work that does this piece and one here. They actually, it's their body of work. So, from an administrative point of view, it might make it easier without losing sight of the fact that there are two components here and there are four action steps.
But my question really is, is does the body, and I'm trying to say it without any preconception, does the body want this to say that we just want this goal to really focus around the businesses that are going to provide jobs and allow people to live here and explicitly not focus on the businesses that don't?
I don't, I think what, and I'm not speaking for the council, what it means to me is that you want both. I don't see it as exclusionary. I don't see this as, don't help modest expand, do help modest expand. That's what I'm hearing from the council, that's what I see in the action items. And I'm also hearing that there is a desire to increase the diversity in wage levels in town, particularly those that allow people to live here. I hear both, not one or the other.
Councilmember Hunt and then Ray.
I had a quick point on the retention of businesses. So, I was going to propose, which I'm not going to propose, but I was going to propose that there, that we strike the new and existing businesses because you could just say, there is an increase in businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah, and, you know, that means all businesses. But I think actually saying new and existing, so if you're an existing business and you choose to locate in Issaquah, that's choosing to be retained in Issaquah. So, I think that covers it.
That's really our only retention word, sorry.
Yeah, it is a good retention word.
That was it.
I think this, this objective is written is absolutely clear that we're focused on businesses that pay a living wage. And so, we would not, under this objective, regardless of what we did with the action items, because we took them from two different places. But this one says, with wage levels that allow, enable workers to live in the community. So, I mean, it's pretty clear. So, if we, if we do crunch them together, we are, we're changing, we're narrowing the focus of our economic development activities. As written has, we want to focus on bringing in jobs that provide wages that allow you to live here, and we want to also attract or, I mean, encourage businesses to expand and grow here, so just generically. So, there are two different thoughts in it as currently written, and when we put them together, we have one focus area, which is bringing in businesses that provide a certain level of income, which I'm not sure is a bad thing. You know, so, but I want to be real clear, at least for me, the way that's written, it doesn't, we're not going to be spending economic development activity trying to bring in four new restaurants that are paying just above minimum wage.
Just, I mean, just think of it as a Venn diagram, right? You've got businesses that are already here, you've got businesses that provide, well, maybe that's not, but there's a Venn diagram of two circles, and is it, is it the area that's at the intersection between the two circles, or is it everything in both circles? And I'm just, I just want to make sure all seven of us understand because if, if in fact, I mean, Chris, I get your point, like you, yeah, I'm the intersection area, and I'm good with that, right? But I'm hearing, I feel like I'm hearing different things around the table, is what people think that that language means.
Councilmember Goodman.
I think with, thank you. I think with everything else in the plan, it's just saying, this is where we think we need some specific emphasis over the next rolling five years during our budget constrained plan. And so, no, I don't think it's saying, these are the only things that we're going to help. These are the only types of businesses that we're going to help or offer services to. And the, and the four action steps actually speak to what we will do under either separately or combined, and those don't change. And so, if your impression was before, when we had, you know, was they are now, separated, you would have the same concern. But if you combine them, it doesn't change anything except make sure that it shows that that one isn't priority of the other.
What if we added the words "especially those" between the two clauses so that, you know, you basically want both, but if, you know, on Tuesday morning, you could either help the businesses that has the high wage jobs or the one that doesn't, you had to pick between them, you'd put your energy into the, it's like, there's an emphasis on those are, that's better, but you'd help both.
I think that's what I suggested about 15 minutes. I think so too. But, but I'm not sure that that's what people want. That's what I want, but.
Let's see.
Would everybody be all right with that?
I don't know. So.
Can you just say that one more?
I would say, there is an increase in new and existing businesses that choose to locate and expand in Issaquah, comma, especially those with wage levels that enable workers to also live in the community.
Okay, I'm good with that. And are we also assuming that the four bullets that would be merged?
Yeah.
I'll stay there, I think.
I'll stay.
It's over. Good.
Mic drop.
Okay.
So, everybody live with that?
There's some people ready to vote. Sweet.
Moving on.
Oh, making guys.
Okay.
Yes.
Never get re-liked it.
That's not how we make our decisions.
No, I mean, no, not.
It wasn't a vote anyway.
No, it was like, are we looking at your body?
The next one is about, is it, is it an ambitious stretch plan, or is it a practical, fundable work plan? Are we, are we promising things by, promising that we will act on the actions, and should we?
What I think I heard?
I was about to do that.
I heard, I heard, get rid of the word "vision" and get rid of the word "fundable" basically, and smoosh together, it's budget tempered action plan, beef up some language about the caveats and incorporate our discussion. And I heard a suggestion to contemplate moving up the implementation of the plan, kind of pages to go behind the how the plan works pages, and that if we did that, that would probably help people understand how to process the plan and what the council's intention is.
All the cards went down except two. Two are still up.
It's like bull in the split.
Councilmember Martz and then Winterstein.
So, what does that mean in practice? I said a while back that to me, the fundamental question is whether this council owns the constitution, the putting together of the action items, or whether it doesn't. And that, that to me is the question that the other stuff flows out of. So, I don't know what you just said has to do with our ownership of those action items. Can you, can you help me understand?
I was going to walk through those points, but go ahead, Emily.
I'm not sure that, I have comments on that other than what I heard was general consensus that if we caveated in that way, we sort of put that verbiage in the plan, maybe make the changes to the order, that there was a degree of comfort with including the potential action items in the plan so that people have a little bit better way of interpreting what might be intended, and the council understands that there will be an opportunity to become full owners of action items as you deliberate in the May-June and then October points in time.
So, if, so if what's on the table is that council doesn't own the action items this evening, but expects to see action items as part of the budget process, I'd like to add, again, I ask if that's what everybody sees it as.
Councilmember Winterstein.
If this document goes out and it has the word, the phrase "potential actions" as the heading above multiple bulleted lists, and my name's on it, then I partly own it, just like all the rest of us do on the city council. Absolutely. So, I don't agree with your contention that what's on the table, that they, we don't own and they do own later. It says "potential actions," that has meaning, I understand that, it's not confusing to me. I can own that. I raise my card right away because I do not want to hear the word "stretch goals." Stretch goals means something very specific. It's when you sit down and say, this is what I think we can do, and if we overachieve, we'll get these other things as well. And that is not the deliberation that we've had.
Okay, fair enough. Apologize for the language.
Well, I heard it a couple times, Brian, and you were echoing what was said, and I wanted to follow.
So, I think that the language in the, how this plan works under potential actions should clarify that these are thoughtful actions that will be deliberated in the future to, related to budgets. It should say, that the letter at the beginning of the document should say, budgets are tight, and we're going to have to prioritize things, and we probably won't be able to do everything in this plan, but it is our, these are the things that we are thinking about. And so, I think it should say very clearly that you're not promising that you will get all of these actions done, but it will be tempered by future budgets. And I thought, including probably either in the, in the page with the circle diagram or in the letter somewhere, I thought councilmember Ray's suggestion of the, of the strategic plan is the long-term, the five-year planning horizon, and the budgeting, the city's budgeting cycle is the, is the work plan cycle, but it's a shorter cycle. Working that in for clarity made sense. Councilmember Goodman.
So, on, in the plan that we're working on, there is a page, the introduction page, and talks about vision and strategy alignment, and then there's a second paragraph on actionable plan, and I think those two paragraphs are really good. And we talked about budget constraints, and I would think that under actionable plan, we can add either a few words or a sentence just to make it clear that there are real, we're facing real budget constraints. But I just think those, I haven't looked at this part of the plan for a while, and I'm looking at it during our meeting tonight. I think it's, I think the words really are really good.
Thank you. So, I would say the question on the table right now is, is the council okay with adding clarifying language in the introduction, in the introductory letter, in how the plan works, and moving forward the implementation section to help clarify that the actions are thoughtful illustrations of the plan's intent rather than final actions, and no other action would be necessary? That's the question.
And I just want to throw out some language, and it goes to the idea, the action items are items for future budget consideration.
I like that.
And that's really what they are. We're not committing to them, we're just saying, and this was to Paul's point earlier in the evening, you know, when you roughen up a plan, you got some, you got some initial seed ideas, these are ideas for future budget considerations, and then what the commitment occurs when we budget them.
And it basically says that under actionable plan.
These potential actions give a flavor of the types of work and investments that may be in the next five years.
I think they're potential budget items.
Similarly, these potential actions will need to be prioritized and funded requirements considered and approved in each budget cycle. It says it really well there.
So, the question is, is council okay with clarifying the intent in the plan and not making a specific change?
Hey, I still, I'm sorry, I still have a question. Are, are we saying, if we say yes to this right now, are we saying that we expect to see these particular action items by and large in the, or some subset of these action items in the budget this fall?
We expect to have a conversation in May-June about the ones that staff had sort of identified, and we have listed as such as probably year one items, and that we're going to present those to you and say, here are the ones that we now, you know, given that time has gone on, we think we want to consider for incorporating into the preliminary proposed budget. Here's, here's what we have to say about that, how we think we can fund it at this point in time, et cetera. We'll have that discussion, you'll give your input, like that's, that's too many, you know, we prefer you guys contemplate cutting that back, or, you know, I see this item out here that may have been a year two thing, that we're, we're thinking should be a year one. Instead, we'll have that dialogue in May-June, we'll take that away, we'll package it up in the proposed budget. We'll also bring in the ongoing updated information from our financial assessment and true those up as best we can and present that to you as the proposed budget.
But you're going to use these action items as a starting point?
Correct.
Okay, so I am then going to oppose the motion in front of us because I have not fully vetted the action items that are in front of us. For the first three months of this process, we said that those action items were a staff level decision and not a council level decision, so I will be against this move secretly.
So, let me, let me see if I could add a little bit of an idea that might help you, because I think when the administration says, here's the 17 things that we, action items, we want you to consider in May-June, not only is it an opportunity for time for us to say, yeah, 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 but it's also time to say, yes, but let's change this, and oh, let's change that, and, and no, not that one, but I like this one that was over there. So, I think that it's a starting point, it's not an ending point, and so, we didn't vet all these things, and we didn't wordsmith them, and gosh knows, we are good at wordsmithing things. Disagreement on that one. But we do have that chance in the May-June review cycle, and then I think, I think, Tola, was your point about, do we own it or don't we own it? I think we own it at that point, and we don't own it today. I think the administration owns it, and then as they bring it forward, there's an ownership transition as we put it into our budget deliberations. That's, that's my thinking of how this could work.
Certainly would be possible to write into this introductory language to say, these are staff conceived actions for future budget consideration. At this point, they're not council policy, or something like that. That sort of.
I think it's a point where they're the baseline that you build off of their council direction. They're not final, obviously, we're not, we don't finalize anything till we finalize anything. But tonight, we're saying that this is going to be the baseline from which a plan will be developed, and there'll be pushes and pulls and whatnot, and I just haven't reviewed it enough. I don't, I don't know enough.
there's more language that we can add that, that would get, get people to a comfort level. But the fact that we have the capability to then go and look at this in May and June, and even say, that's not exactly what we were thinking, and maybe we want to add, or we, like, we talked about, take something from year-two and move it up, I feel comfortable with that. But I think that we, we, as we've talked about, we need to add a lot of language around this to make this incredibly clear. But that was my understanding going forward, and I feel comfortable going forward.
Take it really quick. My own personal philosophy and a position of leadership doing this type of work is I have to have some room for some ambiguity, or I will never move forward. And there's a little bit of trust in the process and the people that are engaged that if they're, and we know that there will be very detailed decisions that will be made at a point in the future. I don't know what those are going to look like. I have a preliminary list that's going to seed that action. I can live with that. And I think that's, I feel that I'm called as a, in a personal leadership position to be able to make those kind of decisions.
So the question before us is with the, with language added to clarify that these actions are not funded and not determined, they are, they are thoughtful suggestions by staff about how the plan might be implemented as crafted, and that they will be further discussed and prioritized in future budgeting. Is the council comfortable with leaving the actions as presented and including them in the plan?
Thumbs up, thumbs down. Gotcha. Looks like they're in.
Thank you.
Anyway, this is all the, in the actionable plan paragraph.
So moving us to number five. The question was, did we need to further define charm and distinctive character? I think you all agreed earlier, we do not, so. What's the question? Aren't we going to change that objective? I think you all agreed, no, okay. Similarly, are we going to change the social and economic vitality objective to?
Oh, they're already, it's done.
Okay, we're leaving that one as it is. And we had lively discussion about whether we were going to refine the success measures. I think we agreed not.
What's the question?
What's the question?
Should we, should the success measures be better refined before we finish the plan? Are we okay leaving it like it? Okay. And then the last one was schools, a lively discussion of that. I think the last place we were was, should the proposed edit to the growth and development fourth objective be, so that it should read, across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, educational services, and other, and other services that contribute to a livable community. Everybody okay with that edit?
Educational services is what it.
It's adding edu, across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, educational, and other services that contribute to a livable community. Everybody okay with that edit?
Educational services is what it.
It's adding edu, across the city, there are a variety of public amenities, housing types, educational, and other services that contribute to a livable community. Looks to me like the preponderance are in favor of making that edit.
I just wanted to.
Okay, so those are my.
Stated earlier, right? Because we don't have any control over the school district.
So those are the eight decision points I brought to you. The loose end, so yay.
Yay.
Maybe Gabe's got eight more.
No. We're not going to spend 15 minutes on summary.
So the last item was, was about the introductory letter, and my recommendation at this point would be, we had kind of a robust discussion about the qualifying language about 15 minutes ago, and I would recommend that I listen to, remind myself, listen to the tape of that discussion, use that as direction, and try and write in an upbeat, positive letter that carries those messages into it as a draft plan for you all to consider at your meeting next week. And if you need to tweak the language, and I'll, of course, check it with the administration before it's in there, that we would, we could proceed with that. That would be my recommendation. Let me, before I ask you to, just to say, uh-huh. The immediate sequence of what's happening next is if, if you have like a word or something that you want to make a suggestion on, do it by 5:00 tomorrow afternoon, send it to Emily or David, because then they're going to give us anything they've got, and Gabriel and I and our staff are going to create a new version of the plan document to go into your packet at the end of the week. So we need, we need, anything else you're going to say that we're going to even think about has to be in by 5:00 tomorrow. I'll draft this letter, we'll make these edits, and a new version of the plan will be in your packet for next week. At that point, you have a chance for last comments, and then it'll get revised for your first meeting in May, when we're shooting for an overall vote on the plan. So that, that's the, the schedule. So my question is, okay with the plan I laid out there for me drafting that sort of introductory lever to come from the mayor and the council? Does that seem like a reasonable way to get that done? Okay.
That seemed like approval. There was one outstanding item that they did use. So it's a question of whether the edit to city leadership and services number two, objective number two, what we add?
Oh, if they voted it down.
If you're done, I have something before we adjourn.
Yes, I'm, I'm done, and before, but before I walk away from the floor. Thank you very much for, this was hard work for four hours. I really appreciate everybody staying on task and staying focused. That was really good. Thank you.
Thank you for your facilitation, Brian, and, and I want to thank council. Two nights in a row of lots of detailed conversations where we all listened to each other and, and built to something more than any of the seven of us thought individually. For the good of the order, eagle-eyed viewers may notice we have a new face at the table this evening. She's actually not a new face, but Andrea Snyder is coming in as our deputy city administrator. She was actually with the city as economic development manager from 2012 through 2017. She went off to another city in the region, but here we are in 2019, and we have her back, and I thought I would ask her to take a minute or two and introduce herself.
Thank you. Well, that was a pretty good introduction, as it is. But yes, I left the city for a short stint to serve the city of Burien on their leadership team, and it was a good, exciting time, great learning opportunity. Happy to be back here in Issaquah as well. Lots of familiar faces, some new ones, too. And I'm just, one of the things that I'll be tasked with that's pertinent to tonight's conversation is to helping implement the strategic plan. So I'm excited to rolling up my sleeve and working with others on that and many other projects. So, thank you.
Welcome, and today was your official first day, yes?
Yes, that's right.
Into the frying pan, or into the fire.
They all go till 9:00.
Or later.
Or later. Anything else before we adjourn? With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.